I understand the city manager wants us to have a briefing on the College Beach Weekend, so let's get started with that.
Yes, sir. Just a short summary, mayor, members of council. I'm going to ask DCM Steve Kovar, he was our executive lead, working with all the public safety entities, and then we're going to have our chief come up and just give you a quick summary. But as he assumes the position here, I can tell you, having been out there and had many observers out there, I'm very proud of how the entire team worked, especially the demeanor of the police officers in just an ebb and flow kind of situation. They are certainly guardians, they are certainly ambassadors, and when shots are fired, they are certainly warriors. And I'm very proud of how they reacted and the temperament with which they exhibited out there. We had a significantly different type of crowd this year, thanks to the planning and the execution of a well devised plan. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, members of council. I just want to give you a quick, kind of a strategic overview, focus on a couple of areas that I think are important for you to know about, and then I'm going to turn it over to Chief Severa, and he can go into the nuts and bolts for you. So while there was some unwarranted violence and there were some injuries, I don't want to focus on that. I want to start out focusing on the positive side of things, and moving forward, we'll look at some lessons learned. So planning and preparation, I want to talk about that. I think that paid dividends for us, and it was a team effort. We had some 20 agencies, both city, state, and community organizations that worked with us during the planning and preparation phase for this past weekend. I think the traffic control of the capacity at the oceanfront was a good deterrent for a lot of reasons. I think not only the traffic, but the number of people in a close area. I think the training that was done prior to the weekend, which was primarily delivered by our police department, was excellent. I think the communications process that we used to reach out to our public, both our public that is permanent citizens here, both residents and businesses, as well as the visitors that were coming in for the weekend. The cleanup, you know, it's important for us to present that image of the great city that we are, and our Public Works Department, our Parks and Rec Department, in terms of getting the oceanfront, the trash cleaned up, the beach prepared, turned over for each of the days, that went a long way towards the peacefulness and the tranquility that we enjoyed for most of the weekend. The second area I want to talk to you about is public safety, and I tell you, I can't be any prouder of our public safety personnel and the response this past weekend. And the tip of that spear was our police department. Hats off to them. They worked well with our state police partners, the sheriff and his deputies that were out there for support. They were literally the tip of the spear with crowd management, with controlling traffic, along with Public Works, with the signage and so forth. And then when something did occur, literally within seconds, there was a response by our law enforcement officers to that site, to be rendering aid to the people that need it, and to try to apprehend the bad actors that were involved. The interaction, I've got to commend the officers on the street for the interaction with the crowd. There was good dialogue, they were very tolerant, good conversations with our visitors that were on the Atlantic Avenue and the boardwalk, and the vibe was not one that had a lot of tension. It was a calm atmosphere for the most part, with good interaction, and that's a credit to our police agencies. I think, you know, I talked about the appropriate responses, and I will tell you that there is no way that we can cover every square foot of our oceanfront. We had a plan, we enacted that plan, and I think it provided pretty good results across the board. Our EMS and fire response, as well as our 911 call takers, was tremendous as well. Many of our first responders were going into those scenes, along with our law enforcement, to render aid to people, and the scenes weren't secure. So hats off to them. So moving forward, I would tell you that most of the visitors were here to enjoy our city. Most were peaceful and respectful to our city, and we communicated that out front, that that's what we hoped would happen. So we're going to continue to learn, refine our plan, and improve, and we're going to continue to work with our community groups that have continually worked with us in the past. But I'll tell you, we're going to commit every resource we have to identify and bring to justice those that cause harm to our citizens and visitors in our city. And that's our commitment to you and the citizens in our city. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Chief Severa, and he'll go through some numbers with you. Chief?
Thank you, sir. These numbers are preliminary, because we're still sifting through all the data from the weekend. As you will notice, you know, people have said the police need to enforce things more, they need to do more. Actually, the crowd that we had, the dynamics at the oceanfront, as the deputy city manager said, was very different than we've seen in the past. We attribute some of that to our traffic plan, which we enacted very early, where we decided to reroute traffic, not only off Atlantic Avenue during the daytime, but also coming in on 264. We did, in our after action reports already noticed, that some of the traffic just filtered over to Virginia Beach Boulevard. We'll take care of that next year, because I'm assuming this is going to have another event next year. But as you can see, we did make some felony arrests, we made misdemeanor charges, most of the misdemeanor charges are what we call order maintenance, and that's not a tremendous number. But remember, this is within about a 30-hour period. When we say College Beach Weekend, it's really condensed to about 30 hours, and some of that 30 hours, everybody's sleeping. So when you really look at the time that the young folks are awake and out, it's maybe a 12-hour snapshot. So the officers did enforce what they needed to enforce. They requested and received voluntary compliance on a number of issues. As you could see, as in every year, we have X number of folks, not only from Virginia Beach, but from Hampton Roads area. That makes up about half of our enforcement efforts, and the rest of the folks are from either Virginia or other, which is out of state. And we also, as we do every year, not only on the oceanfront, but citywide, we look at everything we do based on race, based on a person's home of record, where they are from, and based on age. We have all of that data. I won't give all that in this particular snapshot. I do want you to know that during this particular time, the state police assisted us on 264 and 64, and they, as state police normally do, they enforced traffic very seriously, and they were able to make 139 speeding tickets, 58 reckless, and six DUI arrests, all within that particular time period that we're talking about.
That included in these stats?
No, not yet. Again, we break this down each year that we've worked College Beach Weekend, and you could see as the years have gone by, that the real light blue on the far right is 2018, and we've kept up with, just as we have on some previous years. The busiest year that we've had was 2014, in not only misdemeanor traffic, but in our felony arrests. 2014, 2013 was a very different crowd dynamic, 2017 was a different crowd dynamic than we saw this year. Again, we like to look at year by year, where are we on residents? And you could see there's been a slight change over the last couple of years, in that more and more of the young folks that we take enforcement action are either from Virginia Beach or from the surrounding cities of Hampton Roads. And then finally, as I say, we not only, and I've got to give this one to the Human Rights Commission. When they were first formed, they said we want to see data based on race, based on age, based on home of record. I think we're the only ones in the region who break it out and are this analytical about everything that we do when it comes to enforcement activity. Just four slides, just to give you an idea as to enforcement activity. We did confiscate 11 guns off the street during that time period. Those 11 guns were basically, well, I'll get into some of them, all the weapons that we confiscated were concealed weapons, concealed weapons by felons, concealed weapons while in possession of certain narcotics. Like Deputy City Manager said, the crowd dynamics, really even during the rough times, were fairly amenable to a large crowd at a resort area, where we know that there's a lot of party activities that go on, there's a lot of alcohol being consumed, and yes, there's certain narcotics that are being consumed. On Friday the 27th, at about 8:30, 8:22 to be exact, we did have the first shooting incident. That was at 19th and Parks. That was a result of a road rage incident that started on 264. It culminated at 19th and Parks. The officers heard the gunfire, they immediately responded. We had the subject in custody before the victim ever made it to the hospital. The next night on 4/28, which is Saturday night, at about 11:40 in the evening, we did have a young lady who was shot at the boardwalk in 18th Street. She is a student at Old Dominion University. We do not have an arrest on that particular case. Shortly thereafter, about an hour later, actually Sunday morning, at about 0:40 hours, we had multiple gunshots at 19th and Pacific Avenue. We responded immediately, rendered aid in both cases to the victims, and in this particular case, our officers stopped and detained four individuals who were armed in and around that area. We are waiting to determine through investigative process whether or not those weapons are linked to the two individuals who were in fact shot at 19th and Pacific. But I want you to know, within about a minute, we had folks in custody on that. I'd also like you to know, in that particular case, one female, she was at 19th and Pacific Avenue. We had a male who was also struck in that area. He managed to run to the 300 block of 16th Street, where he collapsed, and we provided aid at that moment also. I split my time between the forward command post and actually being out on Atlantic and Pacific Avenue and on the streets. So I spent a lot of time interacting with the crowd. I want to echo what the deputy city manager and the city manager have had to say. Our officers performed excellent during, not only the trying times, but during the entire weekend. I'd also like you to know that on both cases where we responded, the deputy city manager and I, to 18th and the boardwalk and 19th Pacific, his EMT training and experience kicked in, and he was very instrumental in providing care to both of those victims. We were able to get the rest of our EMS folks on scene, as well as some fire folks on scene, and get both victims out of the area as quickly as we can, and I'm told that everybody's recovering acceptable. But I do want us to know that even in the midst of all this chaos, Deputy City Manager stepped in, and somewhere in the back of his experience, it kicked in, and he went straight to act, straight to work, as we all do, were involved in those situations. We have any questions?
Any questions for the chief? John?
I'd be remiss if I didn't echo the same compliments for our entire public safety folks and the police in terms of how they handled this weekend. And, you know, I'm always impressed with what it is that our police department does, but I'm always even more impressed with what they don't do, because they show a great deal of restraint in terms of maintaining a level playing field and being fair to everyone. They really, they really need to be commended for that, so I wanted to make sure that I echoed those same sentiments. The other thing I'd like to mention is that I received an awful lot of accolades for having a time certain for the interstate redirection, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I would ask that for other large holiday weekends, most particularly 4th of July, which, I mean, we know is going to be a peak time, that we give the folks that live there, the folks that work there, the folks that are coming to visit there at the oceanfront, the same opportunity to have a time certain, to know that if they need to get to the beach, that they need to do it before then, otherwise we're going to have the same plan. And I think that you'll have some other successes in terms of maintaining the crowd size to something much more manageable if we're able to do that again for these upcoming holidays.
Yes, sir.
Thanks again, chief.
Mr. Wood?
Thanks. A couple of questions. So just looking at those numbers, it kind of looked like 4th of July type statistics.
Actually, 4th of July would be heavier than that. The enforcement would be, but the crowd at 4th of July, we estimate up to 100,000 folks. The crowd this year for College Beach Weekend was about half what it was the previous year, maybe even less than that. So the crowd, and the crowd dynamics were very different this year than it was previous 4th of July. We just have a large influx of people during 4th of July.
So, and obviously, the issue that people are mostly concerned about is the shootings. What is, how can we combat that, or is there a way to do that?
We're looking at all of our after action reports, where the incidents occurred, how can we mitigate for next year? That's the best we can do, because folks carry guns concealed, and unless we have an area where we could search everyone, which we do not, we often say that it's a different dynamic than policing the Rose Bowl. 80,000 people show up for the Rose Bowl, but you have ingresses and egresses, and if you want to get into the stadium, they will search you. We do not have that availability in an open environment on the city streets.
So how about the use of technology?
We used it very heavily this weekend. As a matter of fact, we were in the command post, and there was an incident at 17th and Cypress, and we kept watching one individual. We called the officers on the radio, said, "Check the front of that car," and sure enough, there was a weapon in the car. So our, not our officers, but our staff that view those films really do a very good job in directing us to whatever area. We have an incident, to be very honest, on this particular weekend, we had enough personnel in the field that the minute, as the deputy city manager said, the minute something happened, be it an altercation on the street, our officers were on it within seconds, which mitigated a larger issue.
If I may also, on the technology, excuse me, chief, also the drone technology that we have now, the upgrades to the oceanfront cameras, and in one case, one evening, our Hilo program paid dividends. We had a person get away from one of our arresting officers, and the helicopter was able to track that individual for those officers on foot.
I was remiss about the drones. We had an incident in late afternoon, not an incident, but we had a large group suddenly gather on the beach at 23rd Street, just instantaneous. And we were able to put the drones up, we were able to monitor that there was, did not appear to be violent illegal activity going on, so large crowds on the beach is what we have all year long. The drones are instrumental in that. We think that not only our drone, but the one from the fire department, and the one from PAO Communications really assisted us this weekend.
So finally, just one more question I can see. You talked about having enough people on the street, so was it just Virginia Beach Police Officers, or did other agencies be involved, actually on the street, not doing traffic?
In the core area, in what we call the box, in those, it's Virginia Beach Police Officers. Sheriff's Department assists us in traffic in certain areas. We did utilize state troopers late after the second shooting incident. We asked our state police to patrol certain areas outside of the immediate area of the resort area, because we didn't want this issue then to escalate citywide in other places where groups might meet each other for ulterior motives. So we did utilize the state police, we do utilize the sheriff's department, but in that area, in those assignments of, it is Virginia Beach Police Officers.
Yes, John?
Now, while we've conversed in the past, a number of cities, urban areas, including New York City, use triangulation technology that identifies not only gunshot noise, but can identify the type of weapons that it does, given that it's best used in confined areas. Is that something that would improve both our use of drones, because they can be integrated?
Yes.
Are we looking at that as a potential to be able to change our response, and know what we're dealing with when we get there, because then we know the type of weapon?
We have looked at that technology. As you said, it triangulates, but in a specific area. So what we did was, we looked at the entire city, with all of our cases where firearms were utilized, and we said, "We don't have one area that has that big of a concentration to utilize that technology." I hope we don't get there. Certain cities do. Detroit, Chicago, they know that within a one square mile, that is predominant number of their gunshot cases. We looked at a few areas of our city. To be very honest, we know that at a certain time of night, and this was earlier than that certain time of night, on a normal Friday and Saturday night, our officers transitioned from Atlantic Avenue into the parking lots, because to get into our nightclubs on Atlantic Avenue, you're searched. So if someone has a weapon, we know that they leave it in the car, and so we transitioned to the parking lots. But if it comes to pass that we feel that technology would benefit us, of course, we'll look at that.
Thank you very much.
Well, we thank you very much, chief, and Deputy City Manager Kovar, for an outstanding job, and please give our thanks to all of your people.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, or Mr. Mayor now, I guess, we want to put our hats off to all the other city agencies that assisted us. As the city manager said, this was a citywide response. We really appreciate the communication that went out early, the response from the other city departments, as the deputy city manager has alluded to. So thank you.
Thank you. The treasurer was the next one on our list, and he was not going to be here this morning, so we-
My understanding is that Commissioner Rabin is not going to be here as well, so it'd be-
All right, we're saving a lot of time.
They won't be mine, huh?
No reason.
Is the general registrar here?
Yes, Tom is here.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to present the budget. I think I need to turn this on. Okay, well, this will not take long, I don't think. Our budget is reduced this year. Last year was our second highest budget. The governor's race is always the second highest after presidential, so we don't really have any questions or comments about the budget. We're pleased with the budget. Our FTEs remain the same at 12. The biggest thing we're seeing in voter registration and elections is that we're seeing an increase in absentee voting in person and increase in absentee voting by mail, and we really saw that in presidential year, but we continue to see that during the governor's race last year as well. And we continue, that's going to, we believe that's going to continue increasing, that more people will come and vote in person, absentee before Election Day, as well as vote by mail. So for this November, we're guessing, and we're thinking it will be right around 6,000 voters. But our big news is, we're really looking forward to a more secure location for our office and the warehouse. We're currently working with facilities and management on leasing a new secure location that will have additional space, and they'll require a little bit of build out for that space as well. As far as, one of the things we did, we're always looking at ways to improve our processes in our office, and one thing we were able to do just recently was to procure a new soft, one of the things we've already done that's not related to this, is we're using software now to communicate with our election officials. We were doing everything by snail mail, so we're actually communicating with them. They're a precinct assignment, which is different than the bullet right here. But one of the things we are hoping to do as another change in the future is to procure the software where we can actually make changes and design our ballots ourselves. We do not currently do all of that ourselves. We don't have all of the software right now. But that's pretty much it for our office. I'm willing to take any questions, if you have any at all.
Any questions?
One.
Yes.
Can you say, excuse me, when you say "program the voting machines," you really are saying program them relative to the op scan forms that you have, is that correct?
Yes.
And, because what they read is what they see, but how it's interpreted is the program. So, I'd be interested to know what your own data integrity is relative to the oversight of programming?
Yes.
Because that's no different than when you just had the press, the electronic thing, the op scan forms, they should go back and track and see if it matches and actually audit it. You only know what the program translated the color into, not what the color actually was.
Sure.
So I'd be interested later to see, not today, but how your internal procedures and how you validate the integrity of that process, because that's the weak link.
And we actually, anytime, we actually have our logic and accuracy testing Tuesday for the June primary, and I can keep you informed of other opportunities for that, where you can actually see what we do. We do this prior to every election, but I'll be more than happy to keep you informed of those processes. We started absentee voting just last Friday for this election in our office as well. And I forgot to tell you who's here with me. We have Tim Barrow, the Secretary of the Electoral Board, Laura Lee Grimm, Vice Chair of the Electoral Board, as well as Christine Lewis, the Deputy Registrar for our office.
And one thing I noticed in my precinct, that Lewis and I go to, because it's a more senior citizen precinct, let me put it that way nicely, I'm one of those, if I can say that, is the need, or maybe looking at the number of machines you have that go to the car, because I see a lot more of that at the polls, and it's not probably universal. And sometimes I see a, not on light elections, it's the big ones, but you see big buildups and car queues, just because, and that transaction takes a lot more time. I realize you might not solve it this budget cycle, but looking forward to the presidential cycle, that's something you might want to work with the demographics to make sure that where we have that, because now if you're over, I think 65, you can vote that way.
Right.
I don't want to advocate. But many people know that, and they don't want to drive their cars like a drive-thru. I'm just telling you.
And now that we're voting on paper ballots, we actually carry a paper ballot to the cars now, and so it's actually a little easier to manage that process now. But you're right, if you're 65 and old, or if you're disabled, you can vote at your car.
But you do a great job, and the volunteers at your precincts are superb.
Thank you.
That, the, having to take the machines out to the in-person was really, in the car voting, was really a major problem in delaying the vote and the tally, particularly in the presidential cycle. So this, that was, moving to paper was a big issue. You did a great job.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the city attorney.
We can have a hard audit for.
It's okay, Medicare plus two.
Like private, across the month, you're going to get the same answer.
Actually, the most hack-proof-
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council, for an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about our budget. Very familiar slide here, which I will go through somewhat quickly. I think the first thing I'd like you to notice on that slide is the pie graph at the bottom. Basically, what that tells you is 19 out of every $20 that my department spends is for personnel. And so you see this year that we have a 3.6% increase, or about $156,000. Of that, about 50% of that increase is increased personnel cost, and the bulk of the remainder of that is for our FOIA software, the maintenance cost for our citywide FOIA software that we just began utilizing earlier in this calendar year. The last small piece of that increase is associated with additional risk management charges. I've got good news and bad news on this graph. The bad news is it's inaccurate. The good news is the numbers are better than what are depicted here, and so we'll have to, we'll have to change it.
Let that leave it.
Let's emphasize the positive rather than the negative. This chart seems to show that we spent a total of $149 per hour on all legal services provided, and the text over there tells you that we provided 39,525 hours. In reality, the number of hours actually provided or managed was well over 42,000. The amount of those provided in-house, rather than being 87%, was actually 95%. And the total cost per hour of services delivered was actually 117 per hour, rather than 149. So, in all in all, those numbers are back into a more normal trend line that you see going from 14 to 17. On this next page, I'm not going to, I'd refer you to our, the annual report that we put out every year, but there are a couple of things on this page that will tie into the trends that I talked about in two pages. One is the Freedom of Information Act. We tell you there that we responded to more than 600 requests, and we provided more than 76,000 pages. That is important in the sense that that continues an ongoing trend. In FY '16, instead of 600 requests, more than 600 requests, we had about 497. And last year, it was 60,000 pages, as opposed to more than 76,000 this year. Likewise, in our base- Likewise, in our basic bread and butter work, reviewing contracts, drafting ordinances and resolutions, those are also up. Last year, we reviewed over 1,000 contracts. That's, again, a good news, bad news story. The good news is there are fewer contracts that are signed by this entity without our review. The bad news is we spent a lot more time reviewing all of those contracts, and so we feel more comfortable with the contracts that we have entered into, but it was a lot more work. Likewise, in supporting you all directly last year, we drafted over 300 ordinances and resolutions. Now, you didn't adopt all of those. You may not have even voted on some of them, but we were asked to draft over 300 of them. I think, I think Ms. Henley's smiling, she's probably thinking, yeah, well, at least probably a dozen of those were short-term runoff ordinances. And that is probably true. So, I'm not going to go through all of our list of accomplishments here. I encourage, again, anybody who's interested to look at our, at our annual report. But here's, here's what we see moving forward. We are going to continue to see an increasing number of FOIA requests, and those FOIA requests are increasing in size and in complexity. You know, we now are seeing FOIA requests for text messages, for emails, multiple email accounts, multiple devices on which we have to look. You know, we're getting four and five single-spaced pages of requests. So while that FOIA software is good in that it helps us to be able to process those requests, I also think that the consumer, our public, is finding it easier to make requests. And so, you know, at some point in time, we're going to have to still address this ever-increasing amount of FOIA through some sort of budget action. Basic services, as I told you, also a very strong area where we're continuing to see increased demand. I have said every year that I've been up here that I think some of the most important work that we do is in support of our Department of Human Services. That's child abuse and neglect, child protective services, and adult protective services. When I took over, we had one and a half attorneys and one and a half staff who were doing that work. I've now got over four and a half attorneys and, I think, four staff who in some way or other are contributing to that work, and it's very valuable and important work, and that need remains strong. We have major projects still under consideration that you get briefed on frequently, and we are, we still have significant litigation ongoing. Two examples here, not certainly the only cases we have going, but the arena litigation and the voting rights challenge are two things that we are actively working on right now and will require our resources as we move forward. So that's, that's a quick summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Going back to the FOIA, and you and I've had this discussion before, when we look, we get the FOIA request in our package, you'll see the traditional citizen requests and the media requests, but then you see the very obvious commercial requests, where somebody is paying this entity to request the information from us. And is, does that, is that going to require legislation, the General Assembly or something like that, to combat that? Because, you know, I, I just, that just, somebody's clearly getting paid. I mean, an engineering firm or somebody's getting paid to research this stuff, and they just send an email and get it for free and tie up the time--
Well, they don't get it for free if it takes any significant amount of time for us to put together. We've gotten very good about, and you all will have seen in a bunch of requests, we say to you, don't even start looking for the documents yet, but estimate for us the amount of time it will take to respond. We do that on all requests that aren't just simply plug-and-play, where it's just, here's the data, we have it readily available. So we do charge wherever, wherever it makes economic sense to do that, and that is in a lot more cases now than it used to be, thanks to this new software. To answer your question directly, yeah, if there's going to be any change in that, it's going to have to come to the General Assembly, because the Freedom of Information Act is very pro-disclosure, as it should be. I mean, we're doing the public's business, but any exemptions are construed strictly against us. And so, yeah, it would have to, any change there would have to come from the General Assembly.
It's just the, the commercial aspect is what, what just gets to, gets to me a little bit, because, you know, that, it's, they're basically, instead of them coming down and looking through documents or things, they're sending this in and billing somebody else for it.
Law firms are very good at using it now, too, whether it be for future, future road projects, trying to determine potential client lists, scoping out potential future litigation. You know, that's all a business-driven paradigm, and it is, it does occur weekly, yeah.
Mr. King.
Obviously, other cities have this concern and challenge as well. I mean, have we looked at what other cities across the country are doing and how we might make it a little easier?
The, from the FOIA perspective? Well, you know, we're, we're the largest city in the Commonwealth, and we often are, we have a very active citizenry, and the state laws vary from, from state to state. So we've not really looked beyond the state. We do communicate quite frequently with the Freedom of Information Council, and we do communicate back and forth with other localities, but often that we find that we're on the vanguard, because they're coming to us first to try to establish a precedent.
Mr. John.
Last year, last year's budget, we added lawyers to service the school board relative to special education and Title IX litigation or representation. What has been the consequence? What's the trend? Is that flattened? Is it up? Is it having a result? I'd just like to know what, what we got for our additional investment.
I do believe that that continues to be at high demand. Frankly, part of my concern when asking for that additional position was, we were having these Title IX and these 504 cases, and they're cases that really ought to have two lawyers assigned to, to start with, but we would have that and a disciplinary hearing on the same day, and with two lawyers, you know, there was nobody left in mind in the shop. So this has given some flexibility. I, I've got to go back and I'll get you some numbers, but I think the numbers would show that the demand has, has, if anything, increased, but I see a bigger impact in the fact that the attorneys now have some backside support that they just didn't have before. And so I sleep better knowing that they are not only doing the same amount of work, or more work, but they're staffing it better than they were before.
If I could have, just make a suggestion, if we're having the FOIA offices, goes to City Manager IT, it'd be great if there was just a cell number that when we're sending a text, because you can say, no, your advice is, don't do texts, but the reality is, you can't function without doing texts. So let's just figure out how to comply with texts. So if we just have, like, you know, we have a council mail archive, if you put that on any kind of your private emails, if you use it, it goes there. Why can't we have a like cell number that when you're sending your text, you just add that cell number to your text distribution, and it goes right to the archive, and then it cuts out all this, cutting and pasting and all the stuff?
It'd help if that worked.
Because, and then when they want to go look, they just go look.
They would just--
You have the part about searching, so I'm not looking, trying to, you know, do all that. I think that could be very helpful versus kind of downloading phones, just, because I send something from my phone, I put councilmail@vb.gov, and that's the archive, and you can go pull that. And we could do the same for cell, that would be great.
That's a really good idea. Obviously, as I sit here, I think, well, there would still be some texts that we would miss, because that first text into us, into a council member, wouldn't be using that number. And so there may be some texts that we would miss, and the concern I would have is we'd get too reliant on it, and we'd miss that vital text. But we can look into that. We are looking into, to software that is another way to try to deal with that. So we are very mindful of that as part of this process.
I'm just trying to find a better way to comply.
And I, and I very much appreciate that. I appreciate all you all have done. I know that many of you have spent time with my, my FOIA paralegal, having your, having your phones downloaded, and so I appreciate your patience with us.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Dow. Next is our city auditor, Mr. Remy.
All right. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Jones and members of city council. It's going to be pretty brief. When you only have $32,000 of operating budget and seven FTE, you could only do so much. All right. Just as a reiteration, our mission, promoting accountability and integrity in city operations. We take pride of being lean and mean. We, I think we accomplish more than a lot of organizations that are twice our size. But as you can see, we have seven FTEs, two deputies, and Gretchen Chudome is one of the deputy city auditors, two senior auditors, and we have a forensic audit manager that runs the state-mandated fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. We do have a new administrative specialist. Those that have been working with us or calling the office knows that Jody Clark, who was with me for almost 10 years, is, has now moved over to agriculture, and we have Rosanna Clark, who came over from Public Utilities. Okay? All right. And just like the city attorney, most of our money is in personnel and fringe. 3% amounting to about $32,000 is operating. For the next fiscal year, that has been approved by the MLT as well as the Audit Committee, we did request for one additional FTE, and that is attributed, that's attributing to the dollar changes in the budget of the operating, of the 4,000, 14,000 increase. 11 of that is one-time, and mostly that is for new computer, new startup equipment. Normally, we have a flat budget, and if you look on the next slide, this is where that FTE we're going to utilize. Next month, I will be celebrating 10 years with the city, and during my 10 years here, we've only had one FTE dedicated to the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and that is represented by the red line at the bottom. And the number of investigations in fiscal year, we had 76 investigations, and we're on track this year to exceed that. And whether an investigation is substantiated or unsubstantiated by code, we are required to fully vet that allegation, okay? And the allegations can run the gamut. Could run the gamut. Could run from somebody stealing city rocks to collusion and price fix, okay? So since the inception of 10 years, the number of investigations, as I showed you on the last slide, has increased substantially. We've run a state-mandated 24/7 fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. While the number of investigations vary annually, and you see, you saw the trend that it is increasing, the nature and complexity of those investigations has really, really greatly increased, okay? So the, the amount of times to conduct and close an investigation is taking, taking a lot more time. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that there is the awareness. We are proactive. We actually go out and do training to various departments. We do training, not necessarily training, but speaking engagements to the community. If they ask me, whether it's a Rotary Club, Taxpayers Association, one of the political parties, I'm more than happy to come out and let the citizens know this hotline is for them, okay? But what are you going to get in regards to a return on investment, okay? We think we have, we've been very high-performing, not only on the audit side, but in the investigative side. By having the additional resource, we've been very responsive to the city council, as well as to the city manager and his staff. I think a lot, not only from the audit side, but the lessons learned from the fraud side has led to new and improved departmental operating procedures, improved internal controls, improved customer service, cost recoveries resulting in revenue to the city, even though that is not necessarily a goal, it is a byproduct. I think the transparency to the citizens, I know a lot of citizens, and the feedback we get, appreciate the audits that we do, as well as the investigations that we conduct. And I think overall, with the support of the council, of the city manager and his team, it leads to an enhanced trust of the citizens. So we do thank you for your continued support. We do have a FTE that has been, been approved by the MLT. It is in the budget, and we respectfully ask that you do approve the addition of that one FTE, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Mr. Wilson.
I don't really have a question, just a comment. I can't believe it's been 10 years, Lyndon.
May of 2008.
Oh, my gosh. But just, your office, you and your office have done a wonderful job and have really set the example across the region of how to do this job, and just want to thank you for all that you've done. And you're also out in the community, because I see you out of different things. So you're very visible, and we're really proud of what you're doing.
Thank you.
10 years, and he still doesn't show any gray hair.
I know.
Well, we've got a few.
Ms. Henley.
Not a question about your budget, but we did have someone who spoke at the public hearing the other night, who in, or says that this, we had a very large number, I think it maybe was a billion, of stormwater money that was unaccounted for, or that we couldn't account for the way it was spent. And I know you did, one of your audits last year was from the stormwater--
Absolutely.
Could you just give us a brief--
Sure. And, and we've heard that, and as a matter of fact, we have met individually with several citizens, and if they have any complaint or allegation or are uninformed, we're more than happy to sit down with them, and we've walked them through the process. Gretchen ran the audit, and, you know, I could stand up before you and reassure not only yourself, but the public, that from the work we performed, we're very comfortable that the funds have been accounted for. You know, we don't make decisions in regards to what they're being spent on, and citizens may or may not agree on what, how the money is being spent, but as far as accounting for the funds, is it there? Is there transparency? Yes, we can say confidently that money is properly accounted for.
Yes, John.
In your budget, do you actually have the professional development certification fees? Do you pay, or we, does the city pay like we do for police--
That is correct. Out of the, out of that $32,000, probably half of that is for mandated training required for the CPAs, the CIA's, as well as our, as well as our membership. So we're very lean and mean, because some of that is required for us to maintain, and that's included in the $32,000.
I would encourage you to reach out, because I know they do local inspector general training in this area--
Yes.
--for all of the federal government agencies. That's a very rigorous process. It's a statutory investigative service.
Yes.
So I would encourage you to reach out to the local agencies and take advantage, probably under Intergovernmental Personnel Act, you should be able to access that.
And--
Some of that is even free.
Absolutely. We, we're very resourceful, and we do partner with other professional organizations, municipalities, as well as our inspector generals.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dard, do you have something?
No.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is the city clerk.
I'm Vice Mayor Jones, members of council, thanks for having me. So we'll continue that trend of lean and mean, for sure. So council's budget has increased just 1.1, 1.13% this year from FY '18, '19. I'm sorry, from '17, '18. 100% is by general fund. I will tell you that 74% of the operating budget is for lobbying services, BML memberships, National League of City memberships. So we have just a small budget for you guys. Then for city clerk, our budget has decreased just 1.03%, and again, 81% of our budget is for personnel, very, very small amount for operating expenses. So super easy and straightforward. So can I ask any questions?
Any questions?
So Juan, looking forward, what's the one technology or capital investment that would make the biggest difference, if any, in the productivity and the effectiveness of your office?
So we are working now with IT for the agenda automation, which will be here July, August. It's, will improve the process tremendously. It'll reduce our budget, and the nicest-- August. It will improve the process tremendously. It'll reduce our budget. And the nicest thing is it's being paid for by planning department. So it's not going to increase our budget at all. So that is, that's definitely going to help.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Lyndon.
Thank you.
Real estate, Sessor, Mr. Agnew. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, good afternoon. I won't go into a whole lot of detail, because we give the annual report back in the first of March, and a lot of our information is contained in that. Our total proposed budget is 3.340518. And we didn't ask for anything additional in this budget. We're a target budget. It's a 1% increase, and that's mainly, I believe, personnel is what it is. So we haven't asked for anything. Board of equalization is up there, because it stays under us. But I think probably all of you know that we're completely independent 100% from them. So we don't have anything to do with their budget. By category, we're personnel strong, as everyone else has been mentioning just recently here. 9.2% of it is operating. That includes the notices, the postage, all the things that have to do with operating that office, keeping the appraiser certified, licensed, their designations, their memberships, and so forth. And the rest of it is just people. Just some things that really have surfaced since I was here last time with the annual report. I'll just quickly briefly tell you that things are looking up in the residential. From 2015 to 2017, the short sales have decreased 35%. The foreclosures have decreased 27.5%. And the foreclosure sales have decreased 31.7%. These are good signs. Pricing power remains good, but slightly at a lower growth rate year over year. Single-family housing inventories, listings at the start of 2018 was the lowest in 10 years. That's pretty significant there. And also the fact that the inventory, the months to absorb the inventory, which is one of the things that I look at constantly, is that inventory. And it is down just about as low as it's going to get. It can go a little bit lower than that, but that's a very good number. It's a good number if you're a seller. Not so good a number if you're buying. And that's what we hear from people, is soon as something goes on the market, it sells.
It's on the market right now.
It sells very quickly. If you, you know, everyone says, if you're in a, my predecessor just put his house up for sale two weeks ago. He had an offer within one week, and he can't find a house to go into. Had a good offer, a deal, and he's got to find a house to do it. So, yeah, I feel real sorry for him. There is some validity in the new construction. It's kind of up and down, as you see my report. But I think that's just where we're at right now. We get a quarter of a good new construction, and then it drops, and we get a quarter of new construction. So it is some volatility involved in that. The commercial properties are certainly holding their own at what we call a normalized rate. And so is residential, a very healthy rate at the 3%. Apartments are just sky-high right now. I mean, we're still looking at 7% or 8% probably increase because of the apartments. And while interest rates are low, and things seem to be going in the right direction, any increase in the interest rates could adversely affect the market. And just to note, we did ask last year for iPads for field data collection. And what that is for is to go out in the field. Because in the past, the only way we went out in the field and got some information, if something sold, we'd go out and take a look at it. We could go through RAINN, which we're tied into the multiple listing service. We could do that, get a bill and permit. We go out there. This current year, we started a new process of going out and looking at 20% to 25% of the properties in each one of the neighborhoods. And we do that from the street. We actually do it from an area. First, look for hotspots. Then we go out and we look at it. We don't knock on doors. But you'd be surprised how many people will come out to these appraisers and offer them to come in, take a look at it, give us some information. It just gives us a time to interact with the homeowner that didn't pull a permit, didn't sell it. And we could say our bathroom count's right, or our bedroom count, you know, is our data correct? And those iPads have been just a tremendous asset in that, because the verification of the sketch is right in front of the appraiser, and all the details that go along with that house. So if we don't have our data right, chances of our assessment can't be right. So we're trying to institute a 20% to 25% per year, which is a four- to five-year turnover before we go out and we'd look at them again. So that's working. And of course, the next step to that, the next phase to that would be that we'd like to be able to use those iPads to actually update that data from the field. That technology does exist. It does not exist today from our vendor, but I've got meetings coming up in the next 60 days with them. There is a product out there that they've got. They're ready to sell. So maybe we will be coming back next year and asking you for something else, because we'd like to be able to update some things from the field, rather than have to go out, write it down on a permit, or even on an iPad. Now they can write it. We'd like to be able to do that right from the field, some things. Not sketches, but just updating data would be real nice from the field. Save a lot of time. And with that, I'll just be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Juan. I love the idea of going out to the field and looking. Long overdue. Thank you for that. One of the issues, you know, I constantly ask about, we get appraisals for property, and they come right after we just did an assessment on a couple of occasions. And the appraisal that comes in is 150%, sometimes even double what the assessment is for that same property. And I think that's happened on more than one occasion, because your predecessor, I was constantly engaging, and the explanations were far than less than satisfying as to what the database that would cause that to have such a discrepancy, because the variance was outside of any statistical variance that you would expect. So I would also ask, as you're looking at these assessments, especially, it seems to be more in the commercial area, maybe because there's an income method versus a sale. But when these things are coming forward, because the city manager knows, I ask all the time, that when those things come up, is not only just tell us what it is, but could you offer us the why it is? Because if that's, those big differences, then that's, someone's getting undertaxed. I mean, someone else is having to subsidize that, because they're making up for that revenue. So I don't know if we can tip in and look at other databases, Zillow or other places. But sometimes, you know, checking other databases where valuations are, and looking at those sales, and how when the appraisals come into this group, to buy property from someone, and look at, well, the assessment's this, but they want this, and it's $1,500,000, in some case, more money. Okay, if it's worth that, then how come I didn't get the revenue off that $1.5 million? I don't know what the right answer is, and you know your business better than I, but those variances, if you go look in your database, which I got a lot of information from you, and I've been studying it, and you go look at the Beacon, you can't find as many million-dollar homes in your database as you can find in the Beacon. So that doesn't mean they sold. It just means that the advertisement and the database don't line up. And I don't know what the right answer is, but I've done the checking myself. And certainly, there's something to be gained somehow in refining the, reducing the variance between the real market, and maybe this iPad thing will help with that. I'm sure that's part of your angle. But there definitely is something there that I think we're under capturing real market value in our database.
Yes, sir.
John.
Yes.
Just one of the things, you know, from like 2006 to 2009, when we were in, it kind of skewed the assessments to market value. What I've been finding, at least in residential, I don't know about commercial, I think the assessments are pretty close to market value right now on most of the sales that I'm seeing.
As I said, did say residential.
Yeah.
All the examples we've had have been these commercial appraisals, and then the assessments have been wide variances. And maybe all those are anomalies, because those are anecdotal, and I accept that anecdotal things do exist. But just observation.
I understand. Yes, sir. I understand.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks, Juan. Good seat.
Next is Taylor Adams is going to step in for Patty, and Patty is on a Mississippi River cruise.
Good for her.
Yeah.
She took a vacation, Ms. Henley. Yes, she did.
She took a what?
Welcome.
Well deserved.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. And so, city manager said, I will do my best to stand in for Patty this afternoon. I think this is probably the first time, and I'm not even going to guess how many years someone has made the Finance Department budget presentation that wasn't Patty. But here we go. This is a quick overview of where we are. You'll see there's a 570, give or take, $577,000 increase. I want to mention that the vast majority of that, you can see in the neighborhood of, well, $337,000 is attributable to an increase in the DMV STOP program. Two things to mention about that. One, that's coming from some expanded use of that program in the treasurer's office. Second, it's an increase in the fee from the state. So the fee from the state is moving to $25.00. That's coming straight down to us, and it is reflected here. And that is, the remainder of that that's spread across, the remainder of the increase comes from the FTE that is requested in this budget related to the ERP that I'll show you in just a moment. And then everything else is just, a lot of that red is created by a little bit of a reorg that we moved within the Finance Department. Part of that was what brought me into the role of operations manager, and then sort of redistributed the department, or some personnel throughout the department, as the other part of that reorganization. Now, I promised everyone in the, I promised all of the division heads within finance that I would be brief. And so I have this slide that is a quick overview of more detailed slides that follow. So I will stop at the end of this, and if you all are satisfied with where we are, I'm happy to get out of the way. But before I do that, since we're here, I want to recognize a few of the folks from the Finance Department. Amy Daniel, our new accounts payable supervisor, Jeff Redarmo from risk management, who you knew, Anne, Trish, Stacy, and I'm just going to run down the list. It's the whole wall there, and Don at the very end. So looking at SWAM procurement programs, as you all know, we have a disparity study underway right now. It's the city's first study. I'll just mention that we are on pace to complete that. We believe that we'll be back to you with a report near the end of the summer. The ERP is the biggest initiative within finance. This is our road project. It's the finance system that runs the city. We're currently running on one that's 20 years old. It's at the end of its life. We are requesting, and it's reflected in the budget. We're requesting replacement of that project. And within the Finance Department, one FTE to help us support the implementation, ongoing needs of that program. Our risk management fund, we are working towards 70% funding within the fund. We are at about 57% right now. We are not asking for money to shore up that gap. We're doing it through attrition every year. We can tell you that is working. As recently as three years ago, that fund was 27% funded. It's 57 today. We are on track to close the gap. Jeff's doing an amazing job of working through that. So we're pretty close to getting to where we want to be there. As we tell you every time we're up here, we are one of the few cities in the Commonwealth, really in the nation, that are fortunate enough to have a AAA rating from all of the three major rating houses. We continue to be involved as it relates to application of a number of state programs that impact funding here. And then the final thing that we have there is the increase in the STOP program, where that fee is moved from $20 to $25. Again, one thing I'll mention again, just for anyone who might be watching, this is not a fee that we are asking for. This is coming straight down from the state, and it is only assessed on delinquent payers. It doesn't affect everyone if you pay on time. That would not affect you. Now, if you all would like me to, I know that you've got a full agenda today. So if you want me to press on, I can give you more detail, or I can get out of the way. And I'm happy to take any questions.
On that first one, the SWAM procurement program, where you say expect significant cost and recommendations, what does that mean?
So we have no, we can find no record of a disparity study that's been completed that did not come with recommendations to add program. There are always costs associated with that. Now, obviously, we understand it'll be our, we have an obligation to do the very best that we can to administer those within our current structure. But we do anticipate that there will be, that there will be some recommendations that we will bring back to you that may require funding at that point.
Someone says significant. That's always a relative. Are you talking less than $1 million? More than $10 million? Between $5 and $10? So once you say significant cost, that means in your mind, use that adjective, you must already have some benchmark in your mind that you're thinking that means significant? I think that was the heart of Ms. Henley's question. So not let you get away with that answer.
Sure, I understand. So, and so I will tell you, it would be very difficult for me to speculate. But I will tell you, the entire Finance Department budget is, well, forget about the risk management fund, but the 5.9 there. So $1 million would be really significant. So I'm hoping less.
I think a distinction between cost of someone administering a program, which is what I think in your of, and then the programmatic thing you're asking for, and that's a different cost. And I hear you're talking about the administration of what would be the program. Okay, got it.
I am. Yes, sir.
It means a percentage.
Right.
That's right.
My last, I really did read with Ernest, the risk management and the LODA and the disability report. That was a really great report. I know the manager saw some things that I did as well, and he'll be looking at addressing some of those cost growth items. And I applaud you for how well that report was done. That was an excellent report. Just really, really good. A lot of insight in that. Whoever did that, great job.
Thank you, Councilman. If I can give Jeff Redarmo credit for that.
That was a long read.
I'm going to look to shorten it up a little bit.
But it was okay. I like detail.
He likes long reads, Jeff.
But it was well done.
Anybody have any further questions? If not, thank you very much. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Human Resources, Virginia.
I feel, I mean, we filled the wall up.
Thank you, here. Good afternoon, everyone. All right. So without taking you through the particulars of everything that's on this slide, I did want to bring to your attention the third row from the bottom, the Human Rights Commission. It shows a reduction of $6,000 in their funding. And this is something that has happened between Human Resources and the Management Services that will be rectified. It was never intended that their budget be reduced. Their funding will continue as it has been. So I just wanted to point that out to you on this slide. Human Resources has been focused on two main things during the course of the year. One is enhancing the use of technology, and the other is enhancing employee benefits. With technology, we've been working with our IT department on our recruitment system to make it a little bit more user-friendly for our customers, as well as for internal use. We've been enhancing our onboarding system to make the process a little shorter, hopefully, and to minimize the paper associated with the onboarding. And with our learning management system, we've been working to make sure that it can capture all of the certification requirements and needs of our employees, as well as how's their entire training record. This year, we also worked on eliminating the paper associated with employee personnel files. And so that you don't think we're entirely archaic in that area, since 2009, we have been digitizing all of our employee records with the new system. However...
I'm so sorry.
Oh, my God.
Oh, John.
Can I just come and get this tomorrow?
Oh, my God. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, John. So anyone who was already on board, however, who had a personnel file, that file was paper. So we have digitized all of that information. So now all of the employee records are digital. As far as our employee benefits are concerned, all of you have been involved in the efforts that have been going on there with the maternity leave, the parental leave, and our extended sick leave program. So I just want to thank you for your efforts. The employees have really enjoyed the benefits. These are things that they have asked for over time, and we were able to provide those during the course of this year. For the upcoming budget, the proposed budget falls in line with the trends that we have been working on. So the major changes for our budget also are related to technology So the major changes for our budget also are related to technology and with enhanced benefits. So with technology, we will hopefully have in this budget a new position that is going to be focused on meeting our technology needs, and this is going to be critical for projects that are coming up, such as the citywide time and attendance system. In addition, we're looking at enhancement of benefits. You know that there is a proposed 2% merit increase in the budget, but also we are including in there a modification to the Christmas Eve holiday. Right now, employees receive a half day for Christmas Eve, except for when Christmas Eve falls on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. So we would be changing that, making it a full day, and it would work just like any other holiday that the city receives. We also are modifying in this proposed budget the birthday leave. Birthday leave is available to employees after they have reached 10 years of service with the city, and the leave has to be used within the pay period of their birthday. If they're not able to take off, then they lose that birthday benefit. We are proposing a change in that so that it will just be a flex day available to all employees and it can be used at any point during the course of the year.
Do we still have to wait 10 years?
No, it'll be immediate. So beyond the proposed budget, we are continuing to assist departments in, in meeting their recruitment, recruitment challenges. We can't assume that the candidates are coming to us. We have to meet them where they are and go out and look for the applicants to fill our positions. We have discussed many times in here the change in mindset that we are facing with employees who come aboard to the city. They don't come with the thought of staying for 30 years anymore. They, they are willing to change jobs and, and expect to do that. We're also looking at changes that may be coming down the pike related to health care. We're monitoring those changes that are occurring federally and looking at whatever impact they may have on us. And we are also monitoring the changes that may be coming down the pike with respect to the Fair Labor Standards Act. You may remember that I came before you about a year and a half ago with some changes that were being proposed at the federal level to increase the threshold for exempting positions from overtime. That did not go through at the federal level, but we are certainly anticipating that something will be coming down the pike in the near future. All right, so with that, any questions?
Any questions for Regina? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Bill, Monica. Appreciate it.
Next is Communications Office. Julie?
Yes, sir.
Well?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, happy to present to you the Communications Office budget. What we are looking at is mostly both a continuation and then an expansion of service for our office. It doesn't seem like actually very much falls off of our plate. Our plate continues to get new things as technology emerges, new social media platforms and those kinds of things. So the, the key for our budget, we are looking to expand by two next year. One is actually already on our staff. He is funded through, it is an operations technician that is funded through the school system and the individual is hired by the school system this year. You might remember that multimedia services for about the last 25 years has been a provider for multimedia and video services, televising meetings and that sort of thing for the school system. So we are 50/50 city and schools in that unit. And in 1993, when that first came about, that was the last time the schools had put resources to that, and it was a conversation that the city manager had with the superintendent, and what they agreed to do was fund an operations technician position because of the expansion of technology. And we had a single point of failure in our shop with one engineer. So when the engineer was gone, then there was a lot of holding people's breath and hoping that nothing happened while he was gone. So this has really made an enormous difference, not only in our capacity to provide support to the existing services that we have, whether it's going live from the Convention Center for your public hearing or other events, but day-to-day service for this room and for the new systems will, will work. The second position that we are requesting is really a direct result of the conversation that you had at your retreat and our need to step up and do more to combat the rumors and misinformation that we have there. And that really ties into a lot of the, the communication trends and challenges and issues that are, are present. Certainly, one is more desire to have direct communication, not only from the city, but our desire to communicate directly with people. Technology has certainly enabled that to a degree that wasn't capable, we weren't capable of just a few years ago. And as a result of that, we've been able to add a lot of new tools. One in particular that has really expanded the citizen engagement opportunities is, I think, the, the platform that you're now just recently familiar with, but the publicinput.com platform. We have had more response to the surveys and the participation opportunities there than we ever had on anything on the previous platform. It is social media friendly, but it is also mobile technology, so people have been able to engage on that at a level that we hadn't seen. So right off the bat, we had 2,500 people reply with 1,800 comments. On the art mural, we had 7,300 people participate in that. So it was really just a, a nice way to be able to say, you don't always have to come down and come to a meeting, but we're going to expand those opportunities. And that is part of the, addressing the rumors and the misinformation. You know that we launched the, the show, we have the companion website, and we're about, we are still recognizing that there was more we could do in that area and engaging it just as a time investment that is, is necessary there. The last part, you might remember from the, the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, that the number one source of information that people had other than social media was actually the VB.gov website by 66%, which was a huge number for us. And what we know is that our platform could be so much more robust as a service delivery tool and something that people can actually customize and have it present information to their, to their needs. So we've been working, my office is working with IT and others around the organization to actually source a new platform. We use SharePoint right now. It was never intended to be an external-facing site, and it has real significant limitations. And the, the way that technology has advanced now, I think we have the opportunity to really bring that forward in a way that citizens will have the ability to even customize the website for them. So they'll be able to go in and say, let me follow that page. My best example I can give you in that is, I really want to make it so that people can follow individual pages that change and they don't have to think about coming back to us. So for example, if we put up a procurement opportunity, somebody can just subscribe to that page so that anytime a new procurement opportunity is added to the page, they get notified by it. So they don't have to come back to us. That's the kind of functionality we'll be looking for, and we're in the middle of looking at that kind of sourcing right now. So the, there's three additions to our budget. One is a modest investment in social media archiving. We don't have the capability right now of archiving anything from our, our website, and so we are kind of beholden to the providers, whether it's Facebook or Twitter, to do that. If somebody has posted a private message or they've posted it and deleted it, then we don't have that record. The new technology does allow us to do that for a pretty modest price. And then funding to maintain the publicinput.com. I had half, the city manager put in half to try it this year. We've had really good success, so the other half would be that number, and then the, the last would be the fully loaded cost for a media communications coordinator. And then, of course, the television operations technician. The schools has agreed to continue to fund that, and that is essentially the recommendations for our budget for next year. What questions can I answer for you?
Any questions? Yes.
I just had a quick question. A member of the deaf community reached out to me yesterday about when, I know we have the sub, the captioning on the live feed on the website. Is there an issue connecting that to the Facebook Live? Because the captions don't show up on Facebook Live right now.
It is a, I think it's a function on how Facebook, on how the feed is set up in Facebook Live, but it, they should be carrying our feed directly. So I'm not sure. I'll have to look into that and I can get back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Yes, Jeff.
This actually goes across several different departments. It's something that I talked to Amanda about and...
Fits well with the website.
Yeah, so it goes, it goes back to this, particularly now with, with the mayor having resigned. You know, we, we've always gotten a bunch of emails saying, you know, can you come cut the ribbon here, speak at this group or something like that? And I noticed that other cities have a little bit more formal of a process where, where somebody, if they want the mayor or a council member or somebody to come to an event, there's a form, you sign up, and then it's like, you know, who do you want? And there's a dropdown and they can select who they want, which is nice because once they get down to the W's, they're probably not getting to me. But, but, but I mean, that, but...
That makes you number one, Jessica.
Yeah, so, but, but actually, so it works out pretty well. City Chesapeake does it, and there's some other ones that do it, and it's, it seems like it would be a reasonably easy thing to do and it would help us plan our calendars a little bit better. And it won't be a lot of this last-minute scramble where, you know, we need somebody to speak at, you know, whatever. And so I don't know. And it's something that I mentioned to Amanda, and I know she talked to Julie about, and I guess it's going to go back to Dave, so it's, it's, it's all three. But I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that I think it's something that, that we ought to, we ought to encourage, and I don't think it would cost us.
It's a good idea.
There should just be a second string one, too. So if you can't get Jim Wood, you can get Hannah.
Whoa.
It's all Lewis first.
Let's start with the alphabet backwards. Any more questions for Julie?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clear off with Ken Chandler.
Should have reversed it. He didn't, though.
Oh, true. Came out of my mouth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have the opportunity to present to you the Strategy Transparency Innovation and Resilience Office Budget, or what we actually call a STUR. We're in our second year, and I think when I stood before you last year, I was introducing Kathryn Weitzel, who was our new STUR Director at that time. And since that time, I've had a pleasure of actually serving in her capacity. We tend to say the STUR opportunity for Kathryn represented a dream job. Being a Deputy City Manager in the City of Norfolk probably represented her hitting the lottery, if you talk about local government service. So with that, we'll go right through the budget. And I also wanted to mention, to my right here, we have Ms. Neva White, who is our new Chief Strategy Officer. That is our head position of the STUR Office now, and she's been on board with us about a month. However, she comes from the city, and we found our jewel in Neva from the Jewel Library, the Joint Use Library, because she comes to us from the Libraries Department about 15 years or so with the organization. So we're looking, and we're very excited in terms of what she's going to be able to do. Looking at the budget real quick, and we'll be very brief here. Of course, our, our proposed budget is just under $600,000. We're still moving forward with six FTEs this year. The reduction here, 14% or $98,000 some odd dollars, actually represents a change in terms of consulting services, relocation to another line item elsewhere in the budget, and then salary savings, the difference between what was our budget director who'd come over as the STUR Office Director and then the new salary of our director here. Moving on from there, we are committed to a couple of key items, and I think the first one will probably kind of resonate with all of us. As STUR was created and the additional five goals under City Manager Dave Hansen, it was to actually establish the alignment between council's vision and goals and the strategy of the organization, very important pillar. The second item, of course, to develop a performance measurement system and the use of data in decision-making, more or less just intelligent decision-making. And then the last thing here that we had is refining our innovation lab space.
God bless you.
So it can, yes, bless you. So it meets the innovative and process improvement needs moving forward for a continuous improvement and learning organization. So with that, that is the last slide I had. I promised we would be brief. Questions that you all might have?
Any questions for Ken? If not, sounds like you did a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Neva.
Process improvement, heard it's right.
You wrote that last time, Bobby.
I know.
They come to one meeting.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, sir.
I'm going to do two presentations. The budget one I'll do relatively quickly. So here's our budget. It's actually declining 3%. We lost one of our senior analysts, got a promotion in the city, and we always hire at the lowest levels. We brought in a budget analyst one, so that's why we've had that savings. You know, trends and issues, the big thing that I think we've been working on is just transparency. We've done a lot of things over the last few years. You know, open performance is one of our modules. We have open budget. You can come and check any line item that you want. All that's available, you can see it at the same level that a budget analyst does. This balancing act, you'll get a letter on Friday. If you recall, we have that program now. You can go in and balance the budget yourself and make your own decisions. So we've had 88 requests, our submissions as of last week, so we'll show you what some of the suggestions of those have been. The biggest issue we have in our budget is we have two part-time positions and we're converting to a full-time. We really only have one support staff person at this point, so we're trying to give a little help there. You know, all of the stuff you see here, all these packets and everything that you've been getting on the budget come from our office, so that, you know, there's a lot of work there. You know, I'm hitting my 30-year anniversary this summer, so I guess I'm getting reminiscing, but I thought it was interesting. The first budget I worked on was fiscal year '89, and I want to point out to you that we had 15 FTEs in 1988 working on the budget, and today we have 14. So I'd like to say it's great management, but it's probably more technology. You know, everything was spreadsheet, spreadsheet-driven back then, so you know, trying to integrate all of that was very hard. So it's a lot, lot easier today. And that is basically that. If it's okay, I'll go to non-departmental?
Yes, please.
All right. We want to spend a little more time on this one.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
You'd mentioned open budget back a couple of slides ago. I know at our budget hearing last week, someone had mentioned that other city that was doing the, the checkbook register, if you will, on, on the site so that a citizen can go in at any time and see that. How, how different, have you looked at that? How different is that than what we have?
I haven't seen that. Have you? Let me introduce Jonathan Hobbs. He's one of our deputy directors.
Yeah, I actually spoke to that gentleman after the meeting. We are actually working on that project presently with Finance and IT, and we hope to roll it out in about two, three months.
Is it just more of a snapshot than it is the detail that's in the open budget?
No, we automate it and it will be detailed, transactional-level detail.
Wow, okay.
It will not include payroll or anything like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Non-departmental, I want to spend a little more time on this because this is something that you don't normally see day-to-day. There are certain parts of our budget that doesn't really fit in a department. So, and you can see, these are kind of the catch-all where we put different things. I won't read them all, but you can see the different things that go into this area and how we try to capture that information. So you can see here, it actually totals $81 million, and it's a $4.8 million increase. And I want to talk a little bit about what those increases are. But you can see the blue area is the general fund. I want to spend a lot of time on that. The other ones are just your policies that you have in place, like the TIP fund. So it, for the TIP fund that's related to a department like Convention and Visitor or Parks and Recreation, you will see that fund in their budget. But this really captures the debt service and some of the things that are associated with that, so we don't really assign that to a department. Same thing with the Town Center TIF or the Town Center SSD, the debt service and some of those costs. We put it in non-departmental, and they are really just driven by the revenue. So you can see here, the TIP money, that is just driven by the policies that I think I've gone over in a couple of presentations. Town Center TIF, that is just a calculation that we do, that we get from the real estate assessor. Same thing with the SSD. But I do want to spend a little bit of time on the general fund and talk about what is causing that increase. And the biggest thing is what we talked about last year. If you recall, by state mandate, we have to pay for veterans' tax relief, and that's if you're 100% disabled. And you can see, it has really been growing. Now, you know, we also have elderly tax relief and disabled tax relief, but of that $1.7 million, I think two-thirds of it is related to this program. And if you remember, we actually had to make an adjustment in fiscal year '17 at the end of the year to, to balance. We're monitoring that. I think Mr. Moss brought that up when Patty gave her presentation right before the lights went out last week, if you recall. So, you know, we're monitoring that. It's going to be a close call this year, but we're going to monitor it through May, and we'll see if we have to make a decision as we go into June. But I think we're going to be pretty close on, on that. So the other thing I want to mention is this is where we have what we call the regional and organizational grants. So we, we have a lot of things that, you know, we are a regional partner in, and these are all... are all listed in your operating budget. I won't go through them, but you can see a, a good amount there. We also, if you look at the bottom right, this opportunity grants, that's kind of a reserve for contingency, if you want to think of it like that, for grants. If something comes up during the year, we have a little bit of money that we can apply to it. Deputy city manager Chandler has put some, you know, rules and policies together associated with it, I think you guys have adopted. So that money is in place as needs come up during the year. The other big thing is the community organization grant program. It's something that our office administers. You appoint a committee, they will be meeting shortly. And they go through and they allocate money to not-for-profits, you know, in the city that, that provide services to our citizens. This is last year's fiscal year '18. Fiscal year '19, they'll start working on, and they'll have probably by the end of May decisions on that. The other big change I wanted to mention, in addition to the veterans' tax, tax relief really going up, is we do have a $340,000 lease for the general registrar. She mentioned that in her presentation a few segments ago, so she will make sure you're aware of all of that. So is there any questions?
On the elderly relief program, when we reviewed this, and we had to do some, made some changes, because we had not reviewed it for many years, and it had gotten way out of whack, because it had just not been, we didn't have that true up after the reception and I, after the recession. And I think we decided that every three years or something, we would make sure we reviewed this program. Are we doing that?
Yes, ma'am. And if you look on, and this was the third year, so, and, you know, the question was, did we need to do it again with a committee, or could we do it internally? We did it internally. We put the results on page 53 of the executive summary. So if you kind of want to go through that, I think what you will find, and it was a very high-level summary, so if you need more details, we'll be glad to provide it. But basically, you know, we changed some of the thresholds, and it lowered them out, I think, by three or so million dollars. And it's still kind of growing. You know, we grow with the assessment increase, and it, you know, it's not anywhere near where it was, but it's growing with the assessment increase as that policy suggested. And that's a very high-level review.
When you made changes, I guess I need to go back and look at that, because I missed it. So, I mean, have we lowered, have we made it more difficult for people to, to get their exemption, or made any?
Well, when it was lowered, it was changed with the thresholds, so there's, there's basically two types you can have now. You can freeze. We got rid of the deferral part. There were, and, and then, if you have less than $350,000 in assets, not counting your house, and then it's in, it's actually in one of your ordinances, you'll see what the exemption categories are. Depending on the income, you could get 100%, 80%, 60, and 20. And so what we did when it was lowered, council member Henley, we now adjust by that policy, which I think is a single-family home increase. Kevin Chatterley, I'll introduce him, too. He's the one that kind of works on that program for us.
That is correct. Based on the recommendations from the task force, it was recommended that the, the program or the changes in income thresholds grow at the same rate as a single-family home median assessment across the city. So we go to the real estate assessor's report, we pool that, and we modify those income thresholds by that. We have ordinance, but nothing has changed in terms of the program implementation, making it more difficult for citizens to enroll in the program.
Bottom line, it's once that, they were lowered at that point, it is now growing based on that, the, the home value.
Right, so it's just, so y'all did do the review this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a, an updated analysis, and, you know, after everybody's passed their budget, to, to show our relief program in comparison to the other Hampton Roads cities?
Be glad to do it. And that was, if you recall, that was part, because you were on the committee.
I do, it's a good process.
And part of that was a comparison to the region, and how we, and, you know, we were pretty good compared at that time, and that was one reason we got it more in line.
As I recall, there are some cities that don't have any, any relief at all, and so I, I think we, at that time, stacked up pretty well, but we would really want to see how we, how we are in relation to all the other.
Well, we'll be glad to put that together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, David. And so, members of council. Oh, boy, are we going to have fun with this. Kennel drums, please. The final operational briefing for your proposed FY '19 budget, the city manager's office. And you can see we have a sizable increase, about 11.86%, but let me explain what that 186 buys. It buys $100,000 in sheriff's support, in security support here in the building. We implemented that this year. We took it out of contingencies, and we applied that to the manager's budget for the upcoming year. We also have about $67,000 for the, the mayor, or secretary, executive assistant position. That is not a permanent FTE position there. That was Mayor Sessom's desire to keep it that. In our volunteer, office of volunteer resources, you can see we're going to, we're going to help Melissa out. So what did we learn in Hurricane Matthew? We learned that once we pack up the EOC, or even during the last days of the EOC, in a rather traumatic emergency event, recovery goes on. And we found out that the, that the volunteer office serves a far greater mission than we had ever anticipated them to serve. And I can tell you that Melissa and her team were instrumental in helping organize the community, the Home Depots, Judeo-Christians, the Operation Blessing, all those folks, the Methodist organizations that came forth and are still out there helping renovate homes, the very last homes that are there. And so we decided she needs some help. And so we're going to convert part-time to a full-time, and we're going to add one more person to that. Mary Freeman is going to be departing us. This is her last month, and, and she's been a great asset to our team there, but we need to continue to invest in what volunteerism provides to our city, and so that explains that. And subject to your questions, I will call a conclusion to the operating briefings. Questions, the manager?
Comment?
Yes.
I want to echo what you said about Melissa and her team. I know working with the Long Term Recovery Group is still in existence, and it's all volunteer-driven, and, and the city's just there at the table, but I don't think the organization, the, the Long Term Recovery Group, could survive without Melissa. And she's, she's a crutch to, to many of them on that, and she keeps us all straight at the, around that table. So she's done a great job with your team. You've done a great job, Melissa.
All right, thank you. All right, now, there we go to the Burton Station Strategic Growth Area Update. Mark Shea, Comprehensive Planning Coordinator. And so let me just introduce Mark, and as he gets his charts up, Brian's on, on the computer there. You know that we originally did an SGA plan, and we had a configuration, and then we launched in actually following through and looking at how you might shape Burton Station. And we've moved rapidly, no, I wouldn't say rapidly, but we have moved through a series of wickets to get this SGA off the ground, and we are, we are moving into construction. We are into construction on Tolliver Road. We're going to move into construction on Fire Station. We're going to move into construction on a new sanitary sewer pump station. We're going to have all those utilities put in with all this construction, and we have economic development starting to take place, residential starting to take place, and light industrial starting to take place. And so we're full steam ahead, operating on eight cylinders. But the land use plan that we have doesn't really match all the things that we are doing. The composite, the components of the SGA remain basically the same. It's just the layout is similar, is significantly different. And so the planning director and his staff have taken upon themselves to, to conduct a series of public meetings, some very good, some not so good. Got a lot of feedback from that. But Mark Shea's had that responsibility, and so I'd like to present to you our Comprehensive Planning Coordinator.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager and Mr. Mayor.
Go.
I do have a lot of the core team here, that's been going to all these public meetings. I've got Kathy Warren with SGA, Corina Green with Parks, Ashby Moss with SGA, and then Brian Solis with SGA. Robert Guy and Rick Lowman also have been very involved because of the traffic issues that have been highlighted throughout this process. Just going to go through some of these early slides fairly quickly, because you've seen some of these before. And this is just the orientation. It's immediately next to the airport, and between there and North Hampton Boulevard. In the order of the presentation, I'm going to give a few of the actions to date, and then talk about the summary of the 2009 plan updates, and why we need to update the plan, and then go through some of those capital improvement programs that Mr. Manager just mentioned, and then go into the highlights of the draft plan, and then finally, talk a little bit about the Burton Crossing rezoning that's coming up. Actions to date, I'm not going to read each of these bullets, but basically, we've, we've briefed city council twice, I believe, planning commission two or three times already. We've had three public meetings. The last public meeting was really good. We had a workshop-style meeting, where we had breakout tables and a lot of really good discussion. We initiated a steering committee that's going to help us with next steps in the plan, especially memorializing the history of Burton Station. And we've met with the LNJ Gardens Civic League and the Hampton Roads Commercial Realtors Group. So we're basically, anyone that wants us to meet with them, we will, we will go ahead and meet with them and talk about the plan. The existing plan was adopted in 2009. This shows the layout. As you can see, almost half of the land area was taken up by the, the Lake Wright Golf Course, and there is a collection of mixed-use developments along Baker Road, Diamond Springs, and North Hampton, along the outskirts, and then industrial towards the airport. The, the key planning focus for the village area, we, back in 2009, the city looked at three different options to have either low-density residential, high-density residential, or high-density commercial. And at the time, the low-density residential was chosen as the, the best layout for that area. It was going to be framed on three sides with the golf course and a truncated Burton Station Road, a couple other city services in, in the mix. And that brings us to where we are now, and basically, very drastic changes have occurred. There's no more golf course. The Norfolk closed the Lake Wright Golf Course. The outlet mall was developed across Outlet Mall Boulevard from the Burton Station SGA. And the road network has changed, where Wesleyan Drive no longer goes, or is no, is no longer planned to go all the way through, through Miller Store. So therefore, Burton Station Road needs to continue to connect the two roads. We've approved a 381-unit apartment complex off of Tolliver Road, and the Airport Authority recently rezoned a lot of acreage just outside the flight area of the airport. This kind of shows it on the, on the map. Basically, towards the northern portion of that picture, there's industrial-type uses, and you can see the purple colors near the clear zone. That's where the, the industrial-type uses, the zonings have occurred. And right here in the middle is one of the Burton Station villages. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to talk about the rezoning at the end of the presentation. Then go through some of the capital projects really quick. Have you seen these as well? Burton Station Road and Tolliver Road are being built, improved from North Hampton Boulevard on Burton Station to just short of Tim Road. And Tolliver is going to go from Burton Station just to the south of Burton Station to, to the railroad. Thank you, sir. And this is Tolliver here, and this is Burton Station right here. The typical sections for the roadways, we do have standard sidewalks on both sides of Burton Station Road, and with Tolliver, we do have a opportunity to have a 10-foot-wide mixed-use trail. There's more land availability there for the design of that roadway. This shows the Burton Station, Burton Station lake outfall improvements, and this is essential for servicing the apartment complex that was developed, as well as other uses in the area. The sanitary sewer pump station, which is located right here, is being sized to cover all the leak uses in the SGA plan. I was told by utilities that there shouldn't be a problem, that it should be sufficient size for all those uses. And we got the new, just got the new elevations for the fire station, and a little bit of updated information, but they should be under construction January of 2019 and finished April of 2020. So that'll be a great enhancement. Tolliver Road Extension is under, designed supposed to start later this year, and that's the, start on the other side of the railroad to Airlail Avenue. One of the things we are working towards is relocating the Tim Road railroad crossings so that the two roads would actually connect, so that we're still working on that. Burton Station Extension, all the way to Miller Store, is a future project that's going to be under design, and not too much longer. And also, when we were at the public meetings, there was a lot of concern about the interchange with I-64 and North Hampton Boulevard. This exhibit shows the VDOT improvements that are still underway. They're getting close to being finished. But it shows that when you get off the interstate, there's some very major improvements going in both directions. Either you come in eastbound and you get on North Hampton on the Norfolk side, basically, of the interchange, or to the Virginia Beach side. And getting onto the interstate from North Hampton, the turn lane is being extended, so there's, three of the major turning movements are being addressed with this project. The one that has not been addressed, and it's very complicated, is the ramp going to eastbound 64 towards Chesapeake. Going back to the picture here now, I just wanted to reorient everybody. The fact that, you know, we have the rezoning that's been submitted, we have the industrial zoning property here, we got the industrial park up here, and Burton Station Village here, this kind of leads us into the actual development of the plan. We feel like the, the red color here is for commercial center, that due to the fact that there's a regional-scale outlet mall directly across the street, that's appropriate, that we match land uses on our side with major regional-type retail, not, not very untypical what you see all around the interstate system. And as you move further down North Hampton, towards Baker and along Baker and Diamond Springs, we, we put in this, this orange color, which is for mixed-use or multi-use. Mixed-use being meaning more like within a single building, and multi-use being more horizontal. It's basically just replicating what was in the old plan, but giving a little bit more flexibility, that there could be some residential units in there. The older plan had more mixtures of office and commercial, if you look at that map closely. Industrial areas where the Norfolk Airport Authority owns land, or the city of Norfolk, closer to the airport, are in the purple. And we really felt like there is a strong need to have a open space network within that area, to, to both buffer the land uses that may not be compatible, and also to provide connections to walker bike, as well as a couple road extensions as well. Tim Road would be connected, and also Barnes and Airlail over here. The, the village area, which has been such a focal point, the preferred land use from what we've heard from the meetings, is to have a mixed-use concept. And the little star here means this is like a memorial park. Doesn't necessarily mean it has to be exactly that location that the plan is conceptual, but we are meeting with a steering committee to, to look at the plan in general, but also to figure out a good way to commemorate the history of Burton Station through this project. Here's some examples of the mixed-use buildings that we're foreseeing in the area. This is Hampton Town Center, and, and the overall development is a larger scale than what we would probably see in Burton Station. But this building, being a three-story, is very similar to what the residents have been saying at the last meeting in particular. We asked a specific question, how high would you want to see the buildings? No one really wanted anything more than five stories, so three to five is kind of what we're envisioning. And then this is more of a horizontal mixed-use, where the buildings are attached to each other, you have residential attached to commercial. This is a smaller development out in York County, but I thought it was very similar in, in size to the Burton Station Village. Going into a little bit more detail on the open space. Going into a little bit more detail on the open space, the key design feature is that everything is walkable and connected. And we really got a lot of feedback at our last meeting. Every table talked about the need to be able to walk places and not have to get in your car, of course, because the traffic is pretty bad. So that'll be very helpful if we can have a lot of freeway type connections. This is a larger view of the open space network and shows connections on either end with Lake Wright in Norfolk and across the Virginia Beach. The style of recreation amenities that can go in these open spaces, I give a lot of caduce to Karina, who are articulating all these at the meeting. But there's a, the town green, which is where it's a gathering spot for the mixed-use developments because without having backyards and you need a place to have all the open space. Right here is a plaza with a playground, so there's a lot of places where you can mingle and meet people. The urban plaza is a smaller-scale village green, but it's more of a hard-surface plaza, mini park that would be kind of tucked in between buildings and such. And also, there's a lot of mutual benefits with ecosystems and stormwater retention. So a lot of the trail networks can also have the mutual benefits of having stormwater benefits, such as at Mount Trashmore, which is over here, Kellam High School, within the sports yards, they have some stuff. And this is a very interesting view of showing all the biological tension between the public use areas. Greenway system, I think everyone at the meetings was really thinking this would be a great thing, to be able to walk to the retail centers and the employment centers. This is just Norfolk Avenue Trail in Virginia Beach, and this is the Lake Wright Trail that's under construction across the road. This is a conceptual plan for the Lake Wright Park, and they have a nice crossing of Outlet Mall Boulevard. We can do a nice connection into Burton Station from there. On the other end, on Virginia Beach side, when you go further to the northeast, we have a very nice natural park with playgrounds, Lake Lawson, Lake Smith. And it would be great if we could eventually connect those two parks with a greenway system. The future timeline for the plan, we're briefing council right now. The next steering committee meeting is to be scheduled in May, like in about two weeks. Started the legwork on that. We're going to complete the draft plan update, which is the document, and Ashby's doing that in design. And we will be presenting that to the Planning Commission with a briefing on May 9. Then we will be scheduling this, if all stays on track, to go to Planning Commission June 13 and hopefully City Council July 10. Which concludes the plan process, but I did want to put in just a teaser here for the rezoning application that's been submitted, and that's going to go to Planning Commission in May. And these are the comprehensive plan categories that would match what the rezoning application would be for a major B2 commercial center, which would be shops, restaurants, entertainment, those type of uses. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Mark? If not, thank you very much.
Great, good briefing, Mark. Thanks, team. Well done.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to this?
No, not right now.
So Mayor, if we may, can we move forward?
Please.
With the next briefing? Tom Leahy is going to come forward, and we're going to have a conversation about Asheville Park. As you know, a lot of manpower, lady power, has been put to work on this stormwater issue and a lot of urging from the neighborhood. A lot of modeling, a lot of science, a lot of design has been put forth. And in your Friday packet, Tom forwarded you, drafted the terms, and...
I think Barry's going to go first.
Barry, Barry going to go first? Okay.
The history part.
Right. And in order to get to that, Barry is going to stand up and give us a little background on what Asheville Park, how it started, how it came about, and then we'll turn it over to the current situation.
A little background? There's a lot of background here. So, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for having me here. What came to my, what I observed, I know I'm supposed to go fast, but we started this, we realized that nobody that were from staff that went through this is still here. No, not a city manager, not a deputy city manager. Oh, Ashby was there? I didn't know that. Okay. Well, then, Ashby, come on up. Okay. And because of that, and thanks to Councilwoman Henley, you got your three-ring binder, which is the best thing to research, all these things that have been going on. So I apologize, Ashby. But the most knowledgeable person on this is your own district council person, Mrs.
I was not here when this was...
And she was, I was going to bring it up, but she will tell you, she was not here for the first vote, but she is the most knowledgeable. I want you to defer any difficult questions to her at the end. All right. So, and I'll go fast. Started in 1995, 2000, Dick Browner started, he consolidated some parcels. 2003, person Louis McMurray basically brought forward the first rezoning. And that was approved in February 2004. And from what I can tell, it was approved by consent, which surprised me. Key issues were, there was 490 dwellings and there was 160 age-restricted dwellings. At the time, this was a state-of-the-art suburban development with tremendous amenities, tremendous connectivity, villages, quality development and construction. It was a model for the transition area. So then, Louis sold the property to the Sandlers and Asheville Park LLC, they were called. And then the Sandlers came forward with a zoning change, which eventually was approved in 2005. One of the key issues was, it now went from 160 age-restricted to 169 age-restricted units. So it went from 490 to 499. The additional units were in Village B. There was a small reduction in open space because of this, 54% to 52. And the density was recalculated based on new information of the accuracy of the survey information. So it went from 1.03 units per acre to 1.1 units per acre. And that plan was approved in 2005. If you want the details, here's the, we get into the weeds on the villages and what was proposed, where they were proposed. For example, Village B was the age-restricted community, and that gives the layout of the 499 units. Then, we were at the end of the recession, or not the end, but right in the middle, I guess. Wells Fargo foreclosed on the property and due to failure to meet loan obligations, that Realty Group of Wells Fargo then submitted an application to modify the 2005 zoning change. And then, as Councilwoman Henley told me yesterday, I tend to oversimplify and make things too easy. But the oversimplification is that they removed the age restriction, so the 169 units that were age-restricted all of a sudden became, with no restrictions, and removal of an adult center. There was no change in the open space that I could determine from all the information. It didn't appear that, or the density calculations at the time. Then, now we have two different additional, that was approved. We have two different, or rezoning is going on. 2013, November, HomeFed, H O F D, submitted an application to acquire an 87-acre parcel next to this, increase the density by 87 units by transferring that density. Planning Commission recommended approval. The City Council granted indefinite deferral in February of 2014. You don't have to even look at this one. This one's not applicable. In theory, it could come back, but the property is not for sale or is not available to be pulled into this deal, and it is technically still deferred, but we don't expect anything to happen. So there are two that are active, but you only really need to worry about the one, which is 2015, which is the next one. 2015, January, HomeFed submits a new application. This one does not have the 87 acres to the south. Planning Commission recommends approval. And then council defers it indefinitely in May 2019. But some key issues are, there is no change in density from the 499, but the density is redistributed or the lots are redistributed. And they are, for example, Village A and B goes from 304 to 299, it's less five. Village C goes from 94 to 116. Village C is very high, very well-drained land, and there was some discussion that there was, that then that density would help support the recreation amenities. Village D went from 55 to 44, and Village E went from 56 to 40. Village E also identified emerging wetlands, jurisdictional wetlands, and the property sizes in the Village E went up, but also the jurisdictional wetlands reduced the development potential. All right. So, we expect at some point, after you hear from Tom, not directly, but eventually, depending on the outcome of the Phase Two cost, well, this is the ACUS zoning issue. It was resolved, it was an issue of 43 being in, as opposed to 55, and that has been resolved with the one on the left. So that would come back to you that way. All right, go to the next one. All right. So this rezoning would come back directly to you. Why? Because it was deferred by you, and it can come back directly to you. Does not have, does not have to go to the Planning Commission. And is certainly related to what Tom's going to tell you about the feasibility of the Phase One development. The 2015 rezoning, that more than likely will come back to you, does not include the 87-acre Elba Farms property. The number of units does not change. It stays at 499. The units are redistributed, as I talked about. Through this process, Tom's going to tell you about the drainage improvements. And our analysis from these plans, which are conceptual, do not show any significant difference. Even though there is probably some difference in area of stormwater, the transitionary guidelines allow the interpretation of stormwater ponds as open space and density calculation. In addition, the wetlands limitation were jurisdictional wetlands, as determined by the Army Corps, and the same is true, that that does not restrict the density calculation. So stormwater ponds, wetlands, they have an impact, but they do not change the calculations. For that reason, our, of course, we haven't seen anything yet, but when we see something, we do not anticipate a significant change that to your review of it. That's all I have. And so, does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Barry? Yes, Ms. Henley?
I've got just a lot of comments, and I left my marked-up copies of these at home, I guess. Because this is, you know, we hear all the time that we cannot commit future councils. But an application like this sure has committed future councils. When this application came in in 2004 and was first adopted, it was pretty massive. And, you know, I was not on the council at that time, so I only knew what I read in the newspaper. And it may be a pretty good thing to find some of those newspaper articles, because this was such a really big thing. And one thing we found out was that there had not been verbatims done of the city council meetings and all of these approvals. And so, the city clerk's office is doing those verbatims now, because I think it's extremely important for us to read the city council at that time, the discussion, so we can see something about the intent. But from the best I can reconstruct, the 2004 plan, of course, was one thing. And that was kind of put together in response to the transition area plan that had been rather hastily developed and adopted, and then all of those rezones started coming in, in the transition area. And of course, this was the biggest one, that put together a lot of properties. And the approved, the plan that was approved in 2004, which designated the number of units, and, you know, now we're looking at this expectation that they are still supposed to build 499 houses in this development. So that magic number, 499, is the one to keep in mind, and that's the one I'm having trouble with. But let's see, that was 2004. But then in 2005, when it came back and just reading through the material that's here, I mean, it looked to me like one of the changes was that the amount of the property, because it had a firm survey, went down, but somehow or other, the number of units went up, because the initial had approved 490 houses. But after the 2005 review, which reduced the acreage, it went up to 499. I just can't figure out how the number of units were calculated. Because one of the significant things was that, well, of course, at that time, it was kind of an automatic thing that each development got one unit per acre gross acreage. You know, Counton Streets, everything else, one unit per acre. But then, when they had two villages that were supposed to be age-restricted, they were given some additional units. And I don't see where it specifies exactly how many additional units were given because of these two age-restricted villages. Well, in 2004, there were two age-restricted villages, I think B and F. But in 2005, B and F were combined, and all of the age-restricted housing was moved to Village B. And so, there were really several changes that occurred here. And like I say, I still don't know how it got to be 499 lots. And then, of course, the recession, well, the building started in Village A. And, you know, of course, the big thing with the transition area, this big theory, was that all of these developments in the transition area were going to be just the top-of-the-line houses, and they were all going to generate so much tax above what was required to provide their basic services, that all of these developments were going to build all of the infrastructure needed in the transition area from this excess tax that they were going to create. All of the roads were going to be built by these properties. Keep that in mind. Wasn't going to cost the rest of the taxpayers anything.
Here's some information.
Well, a lot of things happened, and everything collapsed, and Asheville Park just set because of the problems that the builder had, and he went into foreclosure, all that stuff. So it set for several years. And then, as this timeline shows, you know, it was resold. But just before that sale took place, in whatever year it was you just said, 2010 or something, they came back to council and asked to have the age restriction lifted. And that did occur, and I was on the council at that time, and I made the motion to deny it, but it got approved anyway. But the age restriction was lifted, but those additional houses that had been given because they were going to be age-restricted were not lifted. So they got to keep all of that additional development, I mean, those additional units that were supposed to be age-restricted, they got to keep them anyway. But all of that was going to be in Village B. And I believe, well, it was fairly soon after that, just as Village B had started construction, that I remember we got Hurricane Sandy. Because I remember going out there after the rain stopped that afternoon, and lo and behold, everything was flooding. But of course, Village B had just started construction, so I said, okay, it's just started construction. Maybe that's why the ducks are swimming around all the streets and everything. But anyway, as Village B developed and it got... But anyway, as Village B developed, and it got all of these houses in there, Village B seems to be the village that is having the greatest amount of flooding now. That's what I'm hearing from people. But I also see that the developer said he really couldn't build all of his houses in Village B, so he's still got five left over that he wants now to have. And I wonder about, you know, if he didn't build everything that he was supposed to build, can we retroactively say, well, you still get five units, and we'll put them someplace else? That's one of my questions. But I'm just kind of, I'm concerned about what this council is going to commit another future council to. Because I think whatever we do with this issue is going to be extremely important. And I think we need to know that we're doing something clean and clear. Everything, whatever we're committing the future council to, we need to know exactly what that is when we vote. Well, then, of course, that whole mess with, pardon me, that whole application with Elbow Farms came in, which the staff and the Planning Commission recommended approval to, but it came to council. But thankfully, we deferred it. We stopped it. Because by that time, the staff, our engineering staff, I believe, was beginning to determine the fact that there was a lot of problem over there. And they said, nope, this is not going further. We've got to stop this. We can't. And so, we did defer it indefinitely. And then, at the, another year goes past, and then came forward this application that, okay, they weren't going to do the Elbow Farm thing, but they wanted to reallocate the lots within Village C, D, and E, to go forward. And that application also went through the Planning Commission and staff with approval. But then, when it came to council, we were still hearing, hey, there's problems out here. We're not, we don't want to hear that now. Because I think the staff by that time had identified that there were drainage problems in Asheville and also in Sherwood Lakes. This was all before Matthew. So I think the best thing we ever did was we stopped those applications from moving forward, or that would have all been approved, and we wouldn't be here today. But, this is where we are. And what we have to determine now is how we're going to fix this drainage, and what we really owe this developer. And when we get into this other stuff, that's really what I'm trying to pin down, because I think whatever we do is what, is what we're committing a future council to. And I want to see the whole picture. I don't think we can do things piecemeal. Oh, well, we're just going to do this right now, and we'll worry about the rest of it later on. I really want to know what else is going to happen out there, because this makes it extremely difficult. We know, of course, that all the taxpayers are going to fund those roads whenever they do get built, because right now, there's not an inch of them that have been built. The first one that was miraculously going to be built was Princess Anne Road from Sandbridge intersection to Punggol. And of course, we can't even do safety improvements in there. There's no money for any of the road improvements. And now, we're finding out that all of this drainage is no good. And the city is going to have to come back and redo all this drainage. But it's also interesting that in none of these applications was drainage even talked about. But one of the things that did happen also, and I appreciate the fact that you all did this, when I realized that we were having so much trouble in the transition area, I asked that we create a Citizens Advisory Committee to look at the transition area, to help us out. And we did create that, and I really appreciate that. And the first year of that commission, we sort of spent getting briefings from all of the departments. And it was extremely valuable to get this background. And I think at that point, some of this information about the flooding came in, that really helped everybody understand this. And so, there were also amendments to the comprehensive plan. Transition area guidelines were amended and adopted in 2015, which solidified a little better and clarified a little better the guidelines for the transition area. And one of the things that was changed with that adoption in the comprehensive plan was that from now on, these applications are going to look at stormwater before the rezoning. And if that had happened back with Asheville Park, maybe this could have been avoided. But all of this area was approved for rezonings without considering stormwater at all. But now, of course, that can be avoided in the future, I hope. So there have been steps taken, but now we're at the point of determining where do we go forward? And, yes, we've got about three hundred houses that have been built there. And those people had a lot of problems with Matthew and other things, and they're saying we need some relief. And that's what we're looking at, at doing. But, this thing that we're doing it in two phases is also raising expectations out there that I'm not sure we can fulfill. And that's been one of our concerns. Again, if there's a Phase One, I want to know what Phase Two is. Because I'm getting emails, and I think we heard from the community at our last open-mic night, that we want Phase One done, we want it funded, we want it done soon. But that's not enough. We also want the other part of it done, too. And I think that, you know, we've got to really know what we're approving, and what we are promising, and what we can fund, and what we can't fund. But, there's that other issue. There's two hundred more houses that supposedly can be built out there. And that's hard to explain to now the taxpayers, who are going to be saddled with funding all of this. Roads, drainage, all of it. And, it's just a really big thing, and I don't think we can look at it piecemeal. I think we've got to see the whole thing. I think, when this comes to us for a vote, whenever it's going to come, I really would like to know exactly what the rest of this community is going to build out to look like, how many more units there really are, and how and when we're going to completely do these drainage problems. I really think we've got to look at the big picture. We've got to know what we're voting for. We've got to know what we're committing future councils and the taxpayers to pay for, and the future people who buy into this community, what they can expect. I just don't think we can do little bits here and there. And, you know, there's just a lot that's changed. It's a lot that we have learned now, that the council in 2004 and '05 didn't know. And now that we do know these things, I think we've got to make sure we do it right. And I just can't emphasize enough how big this is, and how important it is, and how precedent-setting it is for what we do, not only in the future for this community, but in other neighborhoods around it. And there's, it's a big thing. And I'm sorry I preached so much, but anyway.
Mr. Leahy prepared to...
Yes. And so, if we can continue with the briefing, and that was excellent top-off of the history that Barry, because you hit the nail on the head. And we are focused on Phase One, which deals with meeting standards of dealing with a hundred-year storm. There's not enough tea in China to deal with a Matthew across the entire city. We will work on that. Do Barry is in the process of a major study. And we'll be able to provide you more information by the end of the summer across all the watersheds. Once we get a full grip on that, to determine what outlying projects have to take place that affects the entire watershed. Yes, ma'am?
But that's not going to come to us until the end of the summer, but we're going to be asked to approve this in June.
Yes, ma'am. And you're going to, and the solution...
We know that Do Barry study recommendation.
Right. But the solution you are going to be offered today by this, by our lead engineer in the city, is based on modeling, is based on design, and it's based on handling the hundred-year storm. And that is the requirement of stormwater by all developers in every project anywhere throughout the city. And so, we're going to meet that standard by what we're going to put on the table today. And so, there's a neat, there's a good cost share there. You're going to have citizens come to visit you today in the open session, and they're going to advocate for this. And we think that we have enough science, we have enough engineering, that we can move forward with a very good plan that will allow that community to have some immediate relief.
And one more thing, and then I'll let Tom go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
In all of these zoning applications, from the very beginning, the surrounding communities also participated. Flanagan's Lane and Heritage Park. And I think we've also got to make sure, as a matter of fact, we've got a meeting tomorrow night, we've got to make sure that those communities are also considered and have their questions answered. Because they have been a part of this from the very first public hearing, when the Sandlers came. And I think we owe it to everybody. Plus, then we have to answer to all the rest of our four hundred and fifty thousand taxpayers, that they're now going to have to be paying for this. Okay.
Well, good afternoon, Vice Mayor Jones and members of council. I'm going to be brief. So, the Phase One of the Asheville, Asheville Park stormwater project would bring relief to the two hundred and ninety-nine existing families that are in Villages A and B during a one-hundred-year storm, which is about nine and a half inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period. Now, notwithstanding what happened in the fall, that doesn't happen very frequently. It would also make the nuisance flooding that they were experiencing between more frequent storms, two-year, five-year, ten-year storms, which probably seem to happen almost every other year around here. It would make those much better. But it would not, even in this hundred-year storm, it would keep the water out of the living spaces, but it would put some garages and cars that are parked on the street would be at risk. But again, that, those storms don't happen every single year. Phase One has been designed to, with the assumption that Village C would develop at either ninety-eight or a hundred and sixteen units. It makes no difference to the performance of, or no significant difference to the performance of the Phase One project. Phase One will stand by itself with respect to Villages A, B, and C, but Villages D and E could not move forward. They would not have an acceptable stormwater solution with just Phase One. There would be additional work needed before Villages D and E could advance. This is a picture of the Asheville Park. One of the features of Asheville Park that makes it so difficult is its length. It's two miles from the, where a lot of the stormwater is generated, to where it has to come out. All of Phase One has two principal components. One is to make more storage. And Ms. Henley has identified correctly that these three BMPs are changing what is open-space land to open-space water, but it still remains open space. But the purpose of Phase One is to add more storage to the system, so it can trap more stormwater, and also improve the movement of water from the west to the east. And there are also work over here with a pump station and a weir, that will allow us to drain the water out of the subdivision a little faster. That's one of the real problems. And also, in anticipation of a big storm, we can actually pull those lakes down farther than they would normally be, making even more storage. Because again, storage is a, you just can't have too much storage in this part of the city for stormwater control. The project's been subdivided into developer components, that the developer would build, and city components, that the city would build. And that division has occurred along some logistical lines to keep us from running into each other, getting in the way. There are some things that we'd be a little bit better at, and there are some things that they would be a little bit better at. So the developer, their responsibility would be to regrade the historic ditch in Village A and connect it to its original histor, its original drainage. Three new BMPs are storage ponds, and expand one existing storage pond. Two new canals, that is to move the water through these storage canals, storage ponds from west to east. And they would also be responsible for building an emergency ingress egress in Rainier Village, so they would have access out to Princess Anne Road via Cayman Lane. The city would build the pump station and the gated weir and control structure. The gated weir and control structure has already been designed. It's been bid. We're going to open the bids next week. And we plan to have that built and constructed before, as soon as we can, before hurricanes, what I'll call the real hurricane season, which would be September or October. We would also do improvements to the ditch and culvert at the intersection of Sandbridge Road and Newbridge Road, because that's a bit of a bottleneck. As you indicated, this plan would cause water to back up in Flanagan's Lane. And so, part of that is improving that, raising that road a little bit, and improving that culvert, so that water can move downstream quicker and stay lower. And also, there's a farm ditch on the west side of Princess Anne Road, where water from the west side of Princess Anne actually goes into Asheville. And that ditch needs to be stabilized and rebuilt, and the city would do that part. The cost of Phase One is eleven point one million dollars. The entire cost, the entire project is estimated at about thirty-five million dollars. So subsequent phases would have a balance to complete of approximately twenty-four million dollars. The items that the city, the city components would cost about three point nine million. Developer components would cost about seven point two million. So the total project cost of eleven point one million has been split between the city, negotiated between the developer and the city. And the split that we agreed upon was eight million dollars for the city and three point one million dollars for the developer. That's a seventy-two, twenty-eight percent split. And it simply came from the ratio of the lots in A and B and the lots in C. Part of this project is a little unique. The city would purchase a five point four-nine acre parcel from the developer. That would contain BMP ten A. Normally, the city would not own the BMPs. But our water quality people have identified that if we own BMP ten A, we can net two point one million dollars in stormwater, water quality credits that can be used for any construction projects in the southern watershed. So the net cost for the developer then would be three point one million, less the three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars approximately for the BMP ten A parcel. And that would have his cost share at two point seven five million. So a little bit about the water quality credits. If we, if we own this BMP, and it is required under state law that we own it, if we own the BMP, we can parcel these credits out to other projects in the southern watershed. For example, Princess Anne Road seven A, I understand it's not funded now, but it will be one day. And Sandbridge Nemo seven A and seven B, those are, we are working to fund those. Those two projects, by the way, Sandbridge, Nemo, seven A and seven B, just the savings in those projects from these water quality projects would, credits would be three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So just two projects that we have on the books now, and that we are working to fund, would recover almost all of the cost of buying the BMP from the developer. Of course, Newbridge-Sandbridge Road improvements, and I'm not talking just the small ones we're going to make as part of Phase One, but there is a much bigger project for improving that intersection, raising up the roads. And that's a much bigger project, and that, of course, would have, need BMP credits. The Punggol Ferry Road improvements, essentially, any project in the southern watershed that needed credits could draw on these. And if council were to approve the cost participation agreement, it's staff's recommendation that we actually charge these highway projects for those credits, and put that money back into the Asheville CIP for stormwater improvements for future phases. So, the city would be responsible for constructing the city components. The developer would construct the developer components. His components are estimated to be seven point two million dollars. And so, the city would pay him to build those components, less the, less the two point seven five million, which is his share. If the, the term sheet does have some, I guess, safety latches in it, if the bid that comes in for these components is more than, more than one million dollars over the cost estimate, the city can renegotiate with the developer. If it comes in substantially less, the developer will retain a million dollars of the firsts, of the savings, and anything after that would be split fifty-fifty. Couple of other things. No building permits for houses would be issued for Village C until BMP six and sixteen were substantially complete. They received the runoff from Village C. We would not force, we would allow permits and inspections to allow them to build model homes. They are not occupied, they're not connected to the utility. They are not occupied, they're not connected to the utilities, but that's pretty typical is to let them get a couple model homes up. No certificate of occupancy for any of the homes in Village C would be issued until all of the developer components were substantially complete, excepted by the city. Developer could not use any existing BMPs for storage of sediment and erosion control. He could use the new BMPs for that, which is typical, but he must overexcavate, overexcavate the new BMPs and then afterwards do a survey, as-built survey, to prove that the storage that we're paying for was in fact there. So going forward, what do we, what do we recommend? We recommend this, a cost participation agreement based on this term sheet. We think it's in the city, city's interest, to developer's interest, and more importantly, we think it's in the Asheville Park neighborhood interest. The gated control structure is all, is in the bidding process. We're moving forward with that. The CIP is approved and does have funds in it right now for most, if not all, of Phase One. We are, we are hoping to get that done and completed before any hurricanes in the fall. And the reason is, is getting the water out of the lakes and getting those lakes down is one of the biggest problems. It was so restricted that you could just get a period of thunderstorms, afternoon thunderstorms, that would tend to fill these lakes, and it would just come up gradually. Nobody knew it. Then you'd get a two-year, a three-year, a four-year storm, and the next thing you know, there's no storage for the water. So this weir and gated control structure is very important. We have a temporary pump out there, which actually will do the same job as the permanent pump station until that permanent pump station is online. We would recommend that we come back to you sometime in the next couple of months with a cost participation agreement for council to approve. And we would also begin the final design of the pump station and the Sandbridge-Newbridge Road intersection improvements.
I don't expect your answers today, but I do have a lot of questions, and we'll talk about them later. And I know that this particular watershed, 10, I guess it is, has been modeled.
Yes.
But the one to the south has not been modeled.
Right.
And that is flooding horribly. And I know part of that, even though y'all have been telling me for years, it doesn't come from Asheville Park, but part of it does. And it's very hard for me to explain to those people why we're going to build 200 more units up there at Asheville Park when they're being so flooded, even with heavy thunderstorms. So when we don't even know what, how we're going to resolve the area surrounding this, it's awfully hard for me to explain it to those people, why they are still flooding and nothing is being done for them. There's no money to do anything for them. I look at things like, okay, we're buy, I, I still have trouble buying back this BMP that we're constructing, but okay, we're going to buy back five and a half acres. I assume that since we're going to be buying that five and a half acres from Asheville Park, that means we're going to be extinguishing those five lots, because I can't think they're going to keep five lots if we're buying the property. So I still am talking, there can't be 200 more lots left. I also wonder why we don't, if there's any savings, why it isn't all 50-50. I don't know why the developer gets the first million savings and the city doesn't get any. But there are just some, several things that I still wonder about this and have a lot of questions, because, I mean, I know we have to, to help the folks in Asheville Park, but we also have to answer the questions. And, and I know Flanagan's Lane has issues. I've been hearing from folks who are concerned about Back Bay. Yeah, we're getting all this water off of Asheville Park faster at its coming down the Sandbridge Road ditch and right into Asheville Park, I mean Asheville Bridge Creek. What's that impact? There are just a lot of questions I'm having to answer, or I'm being called upon to answer, that I can't answer. And so I'm going to need a lot of answers before we get to that point. And, and sorry that I've talked so much, but I just have to let you know that there are a lot of questions, and I haven't got all the answers yet.
Mr. Hanson, the, are there any question, any questions by anybody else for Mr. Leahy? If not, thank you, Tom.
Five minutes on planning items.
Yeah, okay.
Carolyn?
Are we skipping Taylor?
Jimmy?
Well, there, I don't have.
We're going to, we're going to push the PPA off.
Okay.
We're going to push the PPA off.
There's no planning items.
We don't have planning items.
Do we have planning items? Okay, good.
Okay, so you're going to put the next item off.
Yes, sir, we will.
Okay, fine. We'll now go to city council liaison reports. Anybody have a report? If not, we'll go to city council comments. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and the request of Mr. Moss. We're going to pass out for your review and consideration some of the, you know, for discussion for next week, hopefully of reconciliation, some items for discussion, hopefully taking some recommendations to, you know, really help out, and especially with public safety and, you know, stormwater and, you know, hopefully from some tax relief. But what we're looking for is a robust discussion during reconciliation. We're not bringing it to you next week during reconciliation, that hopefully we could, you know, reach some kind of, you know, joint agreement where we can reach a consensus, you know, that would serve everybody's need to promote a win-win situation. So, you know, you know, I know John had to leave because of a family emergency, but, you know, you know, the intent is to have a robust discussion and to move forward to, you know, good things. The other thing is too, if I may say, I want to thank staff. You know, we had a joint, Jess is back, a town hall meeting. And a sincere thank to staff that really came out, you know, it was a good discussion, and what was really great, I guess we had about a dozen members of staff there.
Oh, yeah.
And the way we did it, we had a presentation on the budget, and it was a very civil discussion with a lot of people that went on. Mark came out and did a thing on, you know, the projects going on, and Captain Yorgbro from the second precinct. But what we had, usually what was a half an hour of mix and mingle, where we identified all the department heads. You know, there was over, I get an hour plus of where people just went up and had a very, very positive interaction, you know, with the people and staff on, you know, topics that they really want to do. But I really want to thank Julie Hill for putting together a great, great, you know, presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's do the agenda review. I'm sorry, Ms. Ken.
Forgot me? I had a question, Bobby, on this. Is this an all or nothing thing, or you?
No, no.
Are you too willing to compromise on the other project?
No, 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 no. The idea is to provoke a good discussion, where if we can come out, yeah, look, if we have a situation where we give some and lose some, but we come up with something, you know, and it just demonstrates to the public that we're having meaningful discussion on, you know, some of the concerns. It's not written in stone.
Well, that, I mean, I'm happy to hear that, because when we get people in front of us that say, vote for the Mad Budget, or vote for the City Budget, or don't vote for this or the other, I mean, it needs to be a City Budget that we collectively get together. That's what I've heard it referenced as, is the Moss Abbott Die or the Mad Budget, so.
Yeah, but let me, just for point of clarification, I'm sure Jess would want to jump in. That's why we're giving it out a week ahead of time, so we don't have this perception of going into reconciliation with two competing budgets.
Yeah.
You know, so the point is, so let's see what happens.
And I've met with Mr. Moss, and I'm trying to come to some middle ground.
Yeah, John has had some preemptive meetings with other people. Jess, do you have any?
I was just going to piggyback on it. A big part of what we wanted to do differently from what we did last year was get this in front of everybody as soon as possible. It did take a lot of time to put it together, but we just give some feedback of our thoughts and what we'd like to see changed, and hopefully find a better middle.
All right. Ms. Wilson?
I just want to say, yesterday, I went to Richmond, because the governor put me on the broadband advisory council, and it was mentioned on some of the things that we're doing here with the, with the, with the Moraya and the, and our cables, and wildfire, and our Go Virginia project, with some of the other things that are happening in the state. So we're really proud of what we're doing here.
All right. If we may, let's go to the agenda review. Under ordinances, anybody have any comments on any of them?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Henley?
Just a comment. This ordinance, J. 3, authorizing the acquisition of property and fee simple for right-of-way for Princess Anne Road Phase 7 project. I've been being told for months and months that that project was ready to go to bid July 1. And to find out at this stage that it's not, because we've still got a very large number of properties that have got to be acquired, just upset me, I have to tell you. We must have some silos someplace we didn't know we had, because I've been telling people for months, this road project is finally going to go to bid July 1, and now it's not. Because we haven't acquired the right-of-way? I just don't understand.
On that particular item, I will be abstaining on that item, because it affects some property that I own, so.
We have a speaker on Item 1A, the leash law.
All right. We will pull Item 1A then. And Item 1B is okay?
Yes, sir.
Item 2, resolution to extend the city cable franchise, Cox Communication. Everybody okay? Item 3, everybody okay with moving forward?
I guess we've got.
Item 4, ordinance to authorize acquisition of property and fee simple, Ray Fire and EMS Station, Burton Station. Everybody okay? Item 5, resolution to direct the city attorney to file petition for the Red Special Ed, election Ray vacancy in the Office of Mayor. Everybody okay? Item 6, ordinance transfer to 293,815 from the General Fund Reserve to the Office of Voter Registration Elections, Ray Democratic and Republican Primary Elections. You don't have any choice. Item 7, resolutions to appoint Robin Wilkac, Cox, and Paige McGraw as deputy city clerks. Item 8, ordinance to authorize city attorney petition circuit court, appoint special commissioner to execute necessary deeds conveyed three parts of the Lake Edward neighborhood. We had a presentation on that last week, or the week before, I can't remember. Everybody okay? Item 9, resolution to approve an extension of the town senate option agreement, recommend the Virginia Beach Development Authority approve the extension.
I'll vote, I'm voting no on 9.
And, you know, Mr. Vice Mayor, with respect, you know, just due to the, you know, consistency of my philosophy and prior actions, I, you know, I don't know also.
All right. Do we have speakers signed up on that?
No, sir.
We don't? Okay. Then with the two no votes, we, we'll put it on the consent agenda. Item 10, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city property known as Lake Wesley, and, and at the rear, and North Bay at the rear. Everybody okay? Item 11, ordinance to authorize direct city manager to execute the memorandum agreement, establish Hampton Roads Regional Stormwater Management Program. Everybody okay? 12, resolution request for Virginia Department of Transportation to accept additional streets for urban maintenance payments, corrections, so forth. Everybody okay on that? Item 13, resolution to affirm commitment to fund revenue sharing projects for Virginia Department of Transportation. Everybody okay? Item 14, ordinance to accept and appropriate $673,000 from the Department of Transportation for maintenance of roadways, B, 3,000 Tidewater Bicycle Association installation bike racks, and $23,480 from Department of Criminal Justice, staff recruitment, police department. Everybody okay? Okay, under planning?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. So we have a speaker on a public hearing, the first one, the extension of cables, financial for Cox Communication. There's also a warrant to deal with that. You should have them speak under the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll just have them speak under the public hearing.
Thank you. Keep it on consent, though.
We'll keep it on consent unless they want to speak again.
All right, thank you.
Under planning, Ishwar LLC Centerville. Mr. Dyer, okay? Number 2, Dragus Associates, Inc., at L. I met with the Civic League and with the developer, and everything worked out, they come to an agreement, so everything should be fine. And Item 3, Glasher Enterprises, Inc., and Glasher LLC, Rose Hall. Ms. King?
Fine, sir.
Item 4, DNS Williams, Inc., and London Bridge LLC, Bayside. I'm fine with it, I don't have any problem. Now, Item 5, Burger Busters, Inc., and Balboa LLC. Do we have speakers?
Yes, and I just distributed a packet that was delivered by the president today.
So we'll pull Item 5.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we had distributed our places the changes that were made at the planning commission.
Yes.
Which I'm assuming is what we would be voting on as the baseline today. Can we have staff just give us an update of what those are, because I don't think that that was included in the, before we do the, before we do the hearing? Would that be appropriate? Thank you.
Barry? All right. Do we have any items for the executive session, Mr. Hanson or Mr. Stowe?
I just have a question, but we can wait.
I have a question. Do we need to vote on the vice mayor and mayor?
Put that first.
So the, the election for mayor is on the out-front agenda. If, as an example, the, Mr. Jones was selected as mayor, then you would also need to select a vice mayor by separate vote.
So we'll do that in two steps.
Okay. Wanted to know the drill.
Well, the drill is, let me tell you.
Okay.
All right, staff.
We all have to go to the session.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.